Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And thank you all for tuning in to our virtual city council meeting of August 23rd, 2021. Attending the meeting tonight via teleconference are council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, G, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself. Items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda. I'd now like to ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Good evening. Start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Here.
Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Council, Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Aguirre to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Moving on to item number four, Presentations and Acknowledgements. Under 4A, we have a proclamation celebrating India's 75th Independence Day. At this time, it is my pleasure to present a proclamation honoring a very special milestone in India's history as it celebrates its 75th year of independence. With us tonight is Dr. Ramish Kanda from the Association of Indo-Americans to accept the proclamation celebrating this beautiful country. I will now read a few excerpts of the proclamation. Whereas on August 15th, 1947, India gained its independence from the British Empire. And whereas this year kicks off the year-long celebration of India's 75th anniversary of independence. And whereas the Association of Indo-Americans is a nonprofit Bay Area organization that promotes creative freedom to all communities that identify with India and the Indian diaspora, and pledges to bring all corners of the community to reflect the true colors of India's vibrant culture. Whereas in support of and in collaboration with the AIA, we honor the rich heritage and contributions that Indian Americans have made to Redwood City's culture and diversity. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Diane Howard, Mayor of Redwood City, on behalf of our city council and the residents of Redwood City, do hereby celebrate the 75th anniversary of India's independence and encourage all people of Redwood City to join in the observance of that nation's great history. I would now like to welcome Dr. Kanda to give his remarks. Dr. Kanda?
Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor Howard, and honorable city council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, G, Ready, and Smith, and Vice Mayor Hale. Also, I would like to recognize the supervisor, honorable supervisor Pine with us. Thank you so much for the great recognition and having me here with you on behalf of Association of Indo-Americans Bay Area. I am very honored to stand here and receive this proclamation from you, Mayor Howard, and the city council of, city of Redwood City, and the supervisor Dave Pine, and other distinguished guests in this call. I am very grateful for those words of proclamation acknowledging India's 75th Independence Day. It is appropriate for this gathering to know that India and the United States are the two largest democracies in the world. This event will stand as a landmark, recognition, and assurance of diversity, unity, and support to our communities from the city council. I personally feel most honored to be part of this ceremony. I'm sure that Indian diaspora in the Bay Area, as well as around the world, feel honored and proud about receiving the recognition and proclamation from the city council and the mayor of city of Redwood City, Honorable Howard. Thank you so much. Much appreciated.
Dr. Kanda, it's a pleasure to have you with us. And I am so pleased that you could be with us here this evening so that we could present this to you personally. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item 4B, which is a presentation on One Shoreline. We'll receive an overview of the One Shoreline project. Our county supervisor, David Pine, will introduce the item. And Chief Executive Officer, One Shoreline, Len Maderman, will give the presentation. Supervisor Pine, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Mr. Maderman, I very much appreciate the opportunity to address the council this evening. The San Mateo County flood and sea level rise resiliency district, which we refer to as One Shoreline, was formed in January 2020 to address sea level rise, flooding, coastal erosion, and regional stormwater detention. And the real hallmarks and principles of our organization are to work across jurisdictional lines, to build expertise in our staff for the benefit of our cities, and to position our cities and our counties to effectively compete for state and federal dollars. So this work is particularly urgent in San Mateo County as we're the most exposed county in the state to sea level rise due to our historical development patterns along the bay. And it's of utmost importance in Redwood City, who I believe has more bay shoreline miles than any other city in the county. So tonight, we'll hear from Len Maderman, our CEO, who will talk about a number of things, including the great progress being made on the Bayfront Canal project, which has been a dream of Redwood City and the area for many, many years, and also speak to a number of other potential areas where we can collaborate, we hope, and help the city as it thinks through sea level rise challenges in the years ahead. So with that, let me turn the mic over to Mr. Maderman.
Right. Thank you very much, Supervisor Pine. And I guess I'm ready to start. If you could advance the slide. All right, so as Dave Pine mentioned, San Mateo County is kind of a ground zero for sea level rise vulnerability. We have more people, including underrepresented people, property value homes, contaminated sites at risk of the first three feet of sea level rise of anywhere in California. You know, one of only six counties in the United States, and the only one on the West Coast with over 100,000 people impacted by that first three feet. The graph on the left shows the nine Bay Area counties. And you can see San Mateo's county's bar is the highest. It's also colored orange, which means that the median income of people impacted is averages less than the county median income of these homes. And that's not the case for every county. In fact, of the nine counties, only three have that situation. So a huge issue, and that's one of the reasons that, one of the main reasons that our district was formed. Next slide, please. And here's another kind of fact. The Bay Area is divided into 30, what's called operational landscape units, which is used by scientists to assess and compare impacts along the bay shoreline. And the region between the San Mateo Bridge and the Dunbarton Bridge has the highest future flood impacts in terms of area inundated. So, next slide, please. So with this information, folks were looking several years ago at kind of how do we start to address this issue? And the image on the right shows four areas, four zones of the county color-coded that the longstanding flood control district collected taxes from. And it worked in those areas, but it was only 10% of the county. And it was, and along the bay shoreline, less than 10%. And there was none of it on the Pacific coastline. So we weren't really well positioned to address this issue as government agencies. And in terms of cities, there are 12 cities along the bay. And of course, it's impossible for any one city to work on a project like this that's transformative and requires an alignment and connection with its neighbors. Next, next, please. Yeah, so in January of 2021, the district was established, known as One Shoreline. We like to think that we take a holistic approach to the threats, not just kind of traditional flood threats, but more extreme storms we analyze, as well as substantial sea level rise. A holistic approach to the geography in terms of, as I mentioned, aligning and connecting neighboring jurisdictions in terms of protection, and a holistic approach to the objectives to reduce those threats, but also look for ways to turn waterways and shorelines and creeks from what has long been considered liabilities into assets, and integrating those assets into communities as communities plan to move forward. Utilize green infrastructure and utilize private lands as well as public lands for this. Next, please. So our priorities for the next, for this fiscal year that just began about a month and a half ago is, as was mentioned, complete the construction of the Bayfront Canal and Atherton Channel project. And I'll talk a little bit about that, show some pictures, to advance other multi-jurisdictional projects that provide substantial protection for neighboring jurisdictions, one of which is Redwood Shores. To work with cities and developers so that private property and public infrastructure is protected against sea level rise and extreme storms, talk about that. Develop a source of long-term, stable funding for climate resilience work. That's something that we've been working on and doing some polling on and taking a close look at in terms of creating a funding, long-term funding source for climate resilience. And then advancing projects within these longstanding flood zones, which still exist and still collect property taxes. And now the district is responsible for them. Next slide, please. Here's a snapshot. I won't go into this in detail. A snapshot of the projects in the light blue ones that we would be, we are lead agency on. The ones in yellow, we're a partner on. And the ones in kind of pink are projects, potential projects that we may be a partner on. And the orange projects refer to Foster City and San Francisco Airport. These are projects by others that we would connect, our work would connect into. And as you can see, we're also looking at the Pacific coast side. So this kind of gives an overview of the various areas of the county that we're engaged in. Next slide, please. So now to kind of zero in on Redwood City. Redwood City's bay shoreline, as Dave Pine mentioned, longest in San Mateo County. And for today, if you could advance this slide, we'll focus on the Bayfront Canal, really three things. Bayfront Canal, we'll take a look at next at the area of Cargill and Seaport Boulevard and north of Seaport. And then finally, Redwood Shores, we'll take a look at. Next slide. First, Bayfront Canal. This is the area. This image shows the current FEMA floodplain map. And the yellow lines indicate all the jurisdictions that are here. Atherton County, obviously, Redwood City, Menlo Park. And that's why the documents that came before the Redwood City City Council previously are documents that include all of these jurisdictions, either land rights documents or a funding agreement that was approved. Bayfront Canal is shown in pink, flowing from left to right towards the bay. Of course, Redwood City has experienced substantial and frequent flooding from Bayfront Canal over the years. And this project is to reduce that frequent flooding. And Atherton Channel flows from the bottom of the picture up and joins Bayfront Canal before it hits the bay. Next slide. Thank you. Okay, so this, I won't go into the details on this. If people want to talk about this project, I'd be glad to. But this shows kind of what the project is all about. The image in the middle of the slide, underground, we are putting in culverts that will divert water from the canal and cross Marsh Road and send that fresh water into the four bay that's owned and managed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Next, please. And this image shows a construction that's currently ongoing. This is a trench that's excavated, very large trench, as you can tell, for the box culverts that are going to be underground between the canal and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Construction is anticipated to be completed in January of 2022. And so far, it's going well. And it looks like, at least at the moment, there's no budget issues or schedule issues of concern. Next slide. So this is an area looking at Bayfront Canal on the left. Interestingly, this shows water. This is during a rain event and a high tide. And it shows water from the bay, which is Flood Slough is an extension of the bay, flowing into the canal through the tide gates. And so this demonstrates why we need to send water out of the canal towards the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service ponds is because when there is a high tide, there's nowhere for the Bayfront Canal to drain. And that's why it backs up and floods into Redwood City and the county. The image on the right shows the canal extending north toward Seaport Boulevard. Those buildings on the left are Menlo Park at the beginning, and then farther away from the picture, Redwood City. And on the right is the Cargill property. And there have been conversations over the past year about the future of that property in terms of potential for restoration. Those conversations are ongoing. Fortunately, we are in the mix of those conversations because people understand that to restore that property, we'll also need to protect property behind it. And so we have hopes for where those conversations lead, but there's no decisions made at the moment. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a current FEMA floodplain map. You can see that Woodside Road comes up the middle of the slide and turns into Seaport Boulevard. And on the left is Whipple Avenue, and 101 cuts through the image. Okay, next. So we'll take a look at a couple of images of properties. And the idea here is to think about what is our goal? Our goal at One Shoreline is to protect people, property, and infrastructure, and look at different examples of development and think about development in the future. So this building is at the end of Seaport Boulevard. You can see the bay is coming up to an area that's next to a trail. And there is actually quite a bit of room. The building is elevated, and there's quite a bit of room between the building and the bay. So I wanted to point that out. Next, please. The next image shows an area where a wall is actually going up and that you can see coming out from the picture. And on the left are some buildings, office buildings. And on the right, across Redwood Creek is the, are some housing. And what we can notice between the buildings on the left and this wall is there's a parking lot. And again, there's room to put this wall, which is about four feet high, above the elevation of the parking lot. And next slide, please. What we see here are the buildings across the way. So the picture on the bottom right shows the housing units on the right side of that picture. And those housing units are what we see in the upper left. And these housing units are obviously close to the water. And there really isn't room to put a four-foot wall on top of this concrete. Not to say that four feet is what's needed right here. It's just to say that when we think about development practices, we want to think about future conditions. And now, those future conditions include sea level rise. And so one of our objectives is to work with cities on incorporating sea level rise into their planning processes as things move forward, as new development proposals come forward. Next. And speaking of new development proposals, this is an area near the old theaters at Whipple Avenue. And as you can tell, there's really no protection from even extreme tides, let alone sea level rise. And so there are opportunities there to build protection into development just to the south, if you will, southeast of Whipple. Okay, next slide, please. So One Shoreline has started to work with staff at Bayside Cities. We're working with Burlingame very closely. We're working with South San Francisco. And we're starting to work with Redwood City staff, which is great, and the planning staff. So that sea level rise is factored into decision-making. Our objective at One Shoreline is that new waterfront development includes shoreline protection as part of our regional efforts. And so this would avoid, by doing it early on in the planning process, avoid more challenging and costly process to retrofit these features after development goes in. And that new public and private infrastructure and buildings are elevated to incorporate future risks. So it's really all about thinking about future risk in terms of what climate change is bringing us. That marshes are preserved and restored for their environmental and flood protection benefits. And we're working with a team of researchers at UC Santa Cruz to quantify those flood protection benefits, particularly around the Redwood City shoreline. And then finally, the trails are incorporated into shoreline protection for their recreational and community benefits. And I know that all, that those things are also priorities for the city, which is great. Next slide, please. Okay, now on Redwood Shores. This is the current FEMA floodplain map. It shows Foster City and Redwood Shores. You don't see Redwood Shores in the blue color because Redwood Shores is not in the current FEMA flood map. But as we'll talk about in a second, that could change. Next slide. So in 2010, FEMA notified Redwood City and your neighbors that you must raise and certify the levies to remain outside the FEMA flood zone. And a project was done after that and completed to FEMA satisfaction. So in 2020, 10 years later, FEMA sent a similar letter. And I've been working with your city manager and others, as well as the senior staff at the cities of San Carlos and at the county and at the city of Belmont about a new project to remove Redwood City again from the, let's say, threat, if you will, of being included into the flood insurance program. And so what One Shoreline's perspective is that only satisfying the FEMA requirement and building to what exactly gets people out of the current FEMA flood zone again would be a short-term fix. And just as we saw in this happening in 2010 and now 2020, we don't want nine years from now to get another letter from FEMA to say, oh, you got to raise those levies again. So we're looking at long-term fixes and such that the next project won't be lost. The benefits of the next project won't be lost with sea level rise or when FEMA changes its maps. Next. There are multiple jurisdictions in Redwood Shores, not just Redwood City. San Carlos has a portion of the levy largely in the area of the county airport. Belmont is also there in the north side part of Redwood Shore. And the county benefits because of the airport and also county unincorporated areas that are right-pined Redwood Shores. So a project of Redwood Shores would impact and have benefits for all four of these jurisdictions. And that's why they're all at the table. Next. So being at the table makes them project partners. And what that means is that we and One Shoreline and the four cities, or the three cities in the county, I should say, would establish common objectives and assumptions, share technical information, environmental mitigations, share costs, and utilize public and private lands to meet the objectives. There are others in Redwood Shores. Silicon Valley Clean Water comes to mind. And of course, private sector entities that have a strong interest in this project and would look, we would look to in terms of being a project partner as well. Next. So to remove properties from the FEMA bay floodplain and protect the city against sea level rise, our objective for shoreline protection is equal to the dark orange. And our objective for new development in terms of floor elevations is equal to the yellow. And essentially, what that numbers, if you look at this elevation grid, the FEMA flood maps are at elevation 10 to 11. The FEMA 100-year floodplain. When you add the required freeboard, you add a couple of feet to that. So it brings up to 12 to 13. And so we would be looking at a few, several more feet, about four feet of sea level rise above that for our shoreline protection system. And we feel very strongly that we can be resilient to this transformative challenge for the county. But the path to it will be quite a bit easier and less costly if we embark upon it now as potential development on the shoreline comes forward to the city. So I would encourage, I'm excited about our conversation with the planning staff. And I would encourage the city to continue in that regard, like we're doing with a couple of other cities on the bayside. Next. And that's the presentation. I would be glad to answer questions and receive comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maderman and Supervisor Pine. Really appreciate the presentation. Let's see if council has any questions for you. Councilmember G.
Supervisor Pine and Len, thank you for joining us this evening. Thanks for the presentation. Len, it's always good to see you. And thank you for the hard work at the Bayfront Canal because as the mayor knows and several council members know, it's been a decades-long effort to make improvements out there. Which leads me to my question is, what kind of planning horizon are we looking at for some of these major projects? They're not going to happen like next year. So what does the planning timeline or horizon look like for projects that you're talking about here in your presentation?
Yeah, I mean, doing Redwood Shores, as you know, it's a very long shoreline. I think it's about eight miles if you take the entirety of the shoreline. And we anticipated, we submitted a grant application to pay for the planning and design of that. We still have not heard the result of that. But the assumption in that was that it's a three-year process to do planning and design and then go out for permitting, which, you know, hopefully is a year, but sometimes can be more. And then, you know, start in the seeking of funding for construction projects, the construction part of the project. So, you know, it's reasonable. I would say that a great outcome would be if by the end of this decade, we could complete one or two of these major projects. And I would count Redwood Shores as a major project.
Len, thank you, and thanks for the hard work. I mean, we don't get there unless we start. So we've started, and hopefully, we can get done in less than 10 years. And as, you know, since I live out here in District 1, happy to lend my leaning in and do whatever I can to get it from 10 years to eight years to six years, or whatever it takes. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. And Mr. Maderman, I was pleased to see that the Bayfront Canal may be completed by January of 2022. That has been many years in the making, and a lot of partners are involved. I'm happy to hear that we're coming towards the end of that project. That was good news to hear. Vice Mayor Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember G was among the many on the list who pushed very hard for that project, so I want to thank him as well. Thank you, Supervisor Pine and Mr. Maderman. Question for you is around awareness around the problem. I find that there seems to be a lot of public awareness for climate change, vis-à-vis the fires, things that people start to feel tangible in their lives. Sea level rise is much slower and less understood. What work are you doing around understanding the community's awareness? And is there more educational work that needs to be done? And I think this is an important issue because, of course, with awareness always comes funding. And as you've mentioned, these are significant infrastructure projects. So curious to know what One Shoreline has done around that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Hale. So awareness is key. You know, we have done polling around the public's awareness of sea level rise, of flooding, of wildfire, and other climate impacts. And part of that polling was done to inform the possibility of going out to the public for some sort of a measure. We embarked earlier this year, actually in February, on a year-long program with the League of Women Voters. And that has been really well attended. We've had over 100 people at each of the events. And we're, in fact, we're going to have our fifth one of the six. We're doing six over the course of the year. And the fifth one is focused on the North Bayside, and that's on September 9th. We did do a program that was largely about Redwood City a few months back. It was in April, I believe. And so we have that program. And then, you know, we're going out to city council meetings like this to talk about the issue, and other city councils. And neighborhood groups met with the Friendly Acres Neighborhood Association a while back, and met with other, like, and met with other like environmental groups around the county. So, so trying to get the word out, certainly there's, there's a lot of work to do on this score. And, and, you know, with, with the, with us being in wildfire season now, and of course, we're in the middle, we're, who knows if it's the middle, but we're in a drought. And, and we don't know kind of how long that's going to play out. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of competition for, for climate anxiety. And, and the sea level rise at the top of that, no. Should it be? Probably not. But in terms of our planning horizon, as Councilmember G, you know, just indicated correctly, the planning horizon on, on addressing this issue is long. And, and climate change doesn't wait for a permit. So we, we need to get going on it now. So, so we're doing what we can on the outreach front. You know, ideas are welcome. And, and as much as we can talk this up, the better in terms of preparing the public, both for the problem, but also for the solutions.
That's wonderful. And I know our Arts Commission is on tonight. It would be interesting to see if there's something that could be done around, you know, art. I often find with these sort of really big esoteric problems, it's hard to, to grasp them. And large numbers can scare people. And I just wonder if there's the opportunity to communicate it through things that are more palatable like art. And, and I know that they're, they're excellent partners in those types of assignments. So I really appreciate all that you're doing. It is on the top three of my climate anxieties. And I think it should be for anyone who lives in San Mateo because we are effectively at the bottom of the bathtub. So really appreciate everything that you're doing and it's great to see the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Bottom of the bathtub. Oh, that sounds awful. Supervisor Pine, I wanted to mention, we do have and do need a lot of partners and we do need a lot of communication. I would also speak with Chambers because they're your businesses and they're going to have a strong interest in all of this and should have a strong interest in all of this. So Chambers and maybe even the Progress Seminar, bringing this message to everyone, letting you know what you're doing and how they can help and how they can partner with us. Thank you for bringing up also about Cargill. I'm glad you're having those discussions. Thank you for touching on that. Please let us know if there's any progress in this area. Would really appreciate that. I don't see any further questions. I want to thank you both for coming this evening. It's really, really important to learn more about this and that we stay informed. So thank you once again for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, moving on to item number five. Public comment on the consent calendar on matters of council interest and on items not on the agenda. At this time, we're going to take that public comment and procedures for making public comment are on the screen. I will now turn it over to our city clerk to facilitate public comment on consent items on matters of council interest and on matters not on the agenda. I'd like to ask our city clerk to facilitate the public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now's the time to take public comment. For those who wish to make public comment, please follow the instructions that are on the screen to be recognized. We ask that you raise your hand and keep your hand raised until you are called upon. If you've joined us by phone, please press star nine in order to raise your hand. And we'll give it just a minute to see how many speakers we have. This is the time for public comment. Please raise your hand and keep it raised. This is for consent items, matters of council interest and items not on the agenda. Okay, so we have four raised hands. Last call. Okay, so we have four raised hands. Our last speaker will be Tim. After Tim speaks, a public comment for this portion of the meeting will be closed. And if you aren't able to make public comment, you can email your public comment to the council@council@redwoodcity.org. So I will call our first two speakers and you will have two minutes. And the timer will start once you begin speaking. Our first speaker is Pat W. And Pat will be followed by call-in user one. Go ahead, Pat.
Redwood City's Police and Mental Health Commission Pilot Program has been a complete failure. The reason I call it a complete failure because like a broken engine, it cannot start. It has not been started for the past eight months. I remember back in January when this program was presented to city council. Councilmember Michael Smith asked city manager Melissa Stevenson Diaz whether there was time to consider some changes. At that time, there was not time because our city manager said there was no time. Well, hindsight 2020, there has been lots of time, eight months of time, and there's still time to make changes. After a lot of research on my own part, I believe I have finally figured out what the real issue is. And that issue is that the clinician Redwood City is looking for, the clinician that the city of San Mateo partnering in this program is still looking for, is a clinician that is certified. Now, what is a certified clinician and why is a clinician certified? Clinicians are certified because they work at hospitals and the mental health department and they work at clinics. And what clinics and hospitals like is to be paid. Mental health through health programs require invoices from hospitals and clinics for services performed by certified mental health clinicians. However, it turns out that those clinicians are not required by the Coots Program nor the City of San Francisco Program. Call Coots.
Thank you, Pat, for your comments. And I apologize. Our next speaker is going to be Dan Slanker. And then following Dan will be call-in user one. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, hi, Council. Thank you for the ability to speak this evening. This is Dan Slanker at Dock Town, and we'd like to welcome everybody out to join us for a creek cleanup. It's actually part of the coastal cleanup that's coming up on September 18th. And it'll be about 10 o'clock in the morning. We should have plenty of small boats out to do cleanup and high tide is at noon. So it's all good. And I think the theme for this year is our happy place. Protect your happy place for the coastal cleanup. So hope to see people there. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dan, very much for your comments. Our next and last speaker is call-in user one. Call-in user one, if you can unmute yourself. Call-in user one, are you able to unmute yourself? See, we are. Call-in user, just another, one more chance to try to unmute yourself. At this time, call-in user where we aren't able to hear you and I'm not sure if you're able to unmute yourself. If you would like to submit your comments to the council by email, you can do that at council@redwoodcity.org. And that was our, maybe she can come back later, but that was our last speaker, Mayor Howard, for this portion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Agalar. We'll now move to the consent calendar. And I understand that Councilmember Ready plans to pull item 6G, which is the Vera Avenue Bicycle Project for additional discussion. Do any other council members have any other items that they'd wish to remove for discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Ready, would you like to address 6G at this time?
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard. Yes, there's some comments in the community. Every time we have proposed street slowing and other safety measures in our, in our community. And I think that this would be a good opportunity. Oh, forgive that other noise that's going on. There, our staff does a, an exceptional job with analysis whenever there's a, a recommendation being made for the streets. And I wondered if staff could talk a little bit about the analysis that was done for Vera specifically and the explanation of the temporary solutions and why temporary solutions are, are offered. And so I was hoping that staff might talk about that for a little bit. And then I would like to ask that this be included with the other consent items. I don't want to not approve it. I just wanted to have a comment about it. And I understand that Jessica Manzi is going to help me with this. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready, and good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale and the rest of the council. I'm Jessica Manzi, Redwood City's Transportation Manager, and just going to give you a quick background on the Vera project. So the goal of this project is to create an attractive, low-stress bike route along Vera that connects major destinations in Redwood City by bike, encourages bicycling for utilitarian and recreational trips and calms traffic. So what's unique about this effort is the quick build approach whereby we're starting with a design developed by consultant bike pedestrian specialists, the Tool Design Group, with the intention to install the design using temporary materials, similar to those used for the Hopkins Project. And then we'll refine the design based on community feedback and data. So by using a temporary materials of a quick build project, we can install the project, evaluate its effectiveness, and refine the design as needed until it achieves our vision of a safe multimodal street that connects residents to Roosevelt Elementary School and Red Morton Park. The project includes a combination of speed humps and traffic circles that are designed to slow the speed of traffic, which is an appropriate way to improve conditions for people on bikes, given the relatively low traffic volumes and residential nature of the street. So if approved, we expect the construction to start at the end of September and to be completed in early November. After a couple of months letting the neighborhood get used to the project, we'd start engaging stakeholders in their input on the design. Key stakeholders include Vera residents, the school community and other roadway users, and our emergency responders. After this preliminary feedback, we can start iterating on the design based on input received and our own observations. Later in the spring, we would collect data on bike and vehicle use to compare with pre-project conditions. If needed, we would continue to refine the design. Ultimately, our desire is to finalize the design that meets our safety and mobility goals that could be installed permanently. And so how this is different from some of the other projects that we've developed recently is really we're starting with a design and implementing it and allowing the community to respond to something on the ground rather than to a design that's on paper. And we're hoping to speed up the timeline for getting improvements on the ground rather than going through a comprehensive community design process, similar to what we followed for Hopkins or a Roosevelt Traffic Calming Project. But again, that's something that we'll be evaluating at the end of this process to see if, if it has been more effective and faster and more cost-effective than sort of the traditional project development approach. And at that point, this point, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that folks may have.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to emphasize the piece that you just stated that, that what's being approved tonight is not the final approval, but rather approving this temporary solution. And then we're going to be seeking extensive community feedback. And I just wanted to focus on that, that this is not done. And thank you so much, Ms. Manzi, for, for, for your explanation and for that great description of what's going on on Vera. And so if I could put 6G back in, in line, I'd be happy to do that.
I think we can do that. Thank you, Ms. Manzi, for clarifying that. That's pretty important information. A motion can be made and maybe a second. So would someone like to make the motion to approve the consent calendar?
So I move, I move acceptance of the consent calendar. I should have done that. Thank you.
By Councilmember Ready and seconded by?
Espinoza Garnica.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'd now like to read the items that we just approved. Approve large recurring purchases in accordance with the city's purchasing ordinance and to conform to the city's new enterprise resource planning system. Amendment number one to agreement with Craftwater Engineering Incorporated for engineering services. Amendment number six to agreement with Crepka Consulting for project management services for the U.S. 10184 interchange reconstruction project. Amendment number one to agreement with BKF Engineers for on-call as-needed professional surveying services related to the city of Redwood City's capital improvement program. Agreement with Smith Emery of San Francisco for special testing and inspection services for the Veterans Memorial Building Senior Center and YMCA project. Award contract to Donald M. Duggan DBA Sky Rack Engineering Services for seismic design calculations and consulting services during construction for the existing water tanks seismic retrofit improvements. Award Vera Avenue Bicycle Boulevard Project. Agreement with CB Roadways Incorporated for trucking and hauling services. Agreement with Turbo Data Systems Incorporated for parking citation processing and adjudication services. First Amendment to the Second Amendment and restated agreement between cities of Redwood City and San Carlos for fire and emergency services. Purchase of two 1500 GPM fire engines. Agreements for hardware and software services related to fuel system management. Agreement with RRM Design Group for the Downtown Parks and Bay Connectivity Project. Amendment number three to agreement with Downtown Streets Incorporated. Approve minutes of July 26, 2021 city council meeting and approve claims and checks from August 23, 2021 through September 13, 2021, and the usual and necessary payments through September 13, 2021. Moving on to item number seven, Boards, Commission and Committee Reports. Item 7A, our Arts Commission Work Plan for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 and Fiscal Year 2022 through 2023. Our Parks Recreation and Community Services Director, Chris Beth, will introduce the item. And Arts Commission Chair, Ashley Quintana, and Vice Chair Anna Westendorf will give a presentation. We'll start with Director Chris Beth.
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard, and good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and city council members. Again, Chris Beth, the Director of the Parks Recreation Community Services Department. I have the pleasure, the honor to be the liaison for the Arts Commission. And again, here this evening is Chair Ashley Quintana and Vice Chair Anna Westendorf. And Ashley, I will pass it on to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And it's an honor to have you be part of it. You've been awesome. And good evening, city council members. I will actually be pivoting to Vice Chair, Commissioner Westendorf, to start our presentation.
Yes, hello and thank you, city council and Chris. So just a brief overview.
Yes, hello, and thank you, city council and Chris. So just a brief overview of what we'll be talking through this evening. We'll do a brief introduction of the city council as well as a purpose of the Arts Commission, as well as our mission statement. We'll cover some of the challenges we've seen with COVID-19, and then get into our previous work plan highlights and accomplishments, and then walk you through our two-year work plan priorities and goals. Finally, we'll wrap up with some ways to get involved for the community, and then we'll answer questions from city council. Next slide, please. So as Chris mentioned, I am Vice Chair Anna Westendorf, and I'm presenting with Chair Ashley Quintana. We're also on the commission with Commissioner Spencer Chi, Jason Newblong, Erin Ashford, Sandra Keely, and Carol Skonzer. Next slide. So the purpose of the Arts Commission comes in four parts. So one of it is to be an advocate. We want to promote arts events and related programs in the city, and those include ones that the Arts Commission is not directly involved with. Second is we want to be a funder. We allocate a number of large and small grants throughout the year in order to help us fund and subsidize some of these some of this work. Third, we're a broker. We want to bring together groups to support the arts, and that includes making introductions to other groups, whether it is an artist to a venue, an artist to a possible collaborator, to generally reinforce the arts community in Redwood City. And finally, we want to be a provider of concert series, art contests, public art, and bring arts and culture to the forefront of Redwood City. Next slide. Our mission statement is the Redwood City Arts Commission, on behalf of the city council, ensures that art, culture, and creative experiences are woven into the fabric of our community by being an advocate for art and culture awareness, sponsoring arts and culture through grants, and sanctioning public art and events. So there have been a number of challenges with COVID-19. This starts with artists have really been struggling as their work is canceled or postponed, often with unknown dates to be rescheduled in the future, if at all. In-person events are canceled, which makes it hard not only to present their work, but also to collaborate. And then finally, nonprofits have really been struggling to shift to online programming, which can be challenging, particularly for some of the arts which are more oriented towards being in person. The Arts Commission increased the number of grants we gave out and tried to help nonprofits with additional work plans to support the community. So our previous work plans and accomplishments. So at a high level, this was centered around improving the grant process, implementing Phase One of the Public Art Master Vision Plan, which we'll get into a little bit, and then improving commission communications and outreach. Next slide. Digging into the improving the grant process, this is a work plan bullet point that we consider completed. This was broken into basically three parts. One is establishing grant priorities so that the commissioners ourselves could really clearly establish what we were looking for when we evaluated a grant proposal. Those priorities are developing the downtown area as the city's cultural center, celebrating diversity, and then development, development, developing new cultural projects, excuse me. Our second part of that is refreshing the grant application for 2020, 2021. And we did that by simplifying the application and forms to make it more accessible. We want to lower that barrier to entry. And finally, we hosted a grant workshop so that anyone who had any questions about the grant process, what we were looking for, what the details of the form was asking them, they had the opportunity to ask questions and really understand it better, again, trying to lower that barrier to entry.
Okay, so, oh, do you want to go back? And then we can do the video? If it plays, hopefully. Thank you. I wanted to speak as the video was going, but very cool music. And I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Ashford, who put that together. That was actually a example of how percent for art ordinance by you all was actually inspiring Jet Martinez' mural on Commercial Way. So if you haven't checked it out, I really encourage you to do it. It's an amazing mural. And then next up that you see on your screen is actually the Portal mural by Griffin One, and it's on the Rock Salt Building. And actually, they're very close together. So really recommend just a visit to Commercial Way. And this is just really reflecting the fact that we are on track when it comes to implementing Phase One of Public Art Master Vision. So we changed our commission name to Arts Commission. We updated the ordinance. And also, next slide. We're doing many new utility boxes. This is actually one of my favorites as well. It's on Bobby D's Cocktail Lounge Building. It's by Matt Evans. He actually, this is the second one he's done in the city. His other one is at the library, if you all recall, the Little Monsters as well. And so really just amazing to embrace all these utility boxes, mural programs, and projects, and really also doing the residential percent for arts adopted by the city council. Next slide. And, you know, we continue to work on one of the most important things, especially these upcoming years, is improving our commission communications and outreach. So this is a picture that you'll see with Partnership Boys and Girls Club at the Hoover Park mural. So we really are hoping to improve our commission website, to expand our community outreach, and really make sure that we are providing the necessary updates to you all. And hopefully we can do that at a quarterly basis and whatnot. So that's a great transition to what we had set as goals. And next slide, how we want to continue doing our two-year work plan priorities and goals. So you'll notice that we want to continue having our implementation of Phase One of our Public Art Master Vision Plan, engaging the community through public art, especially having that diversity and inclusion lens through it. And I'll talk to you all more about our racial equity mural very shortly. And then the third one is improving commission communications and outreach. So how do we make sure that the community knows that all the amazing art that Redwood City has, and how do they get involved? Next slide. So this is actually, I'm going to say this is all my favorite ones. They're amazing art in the city. This is actually Mona Karen. It's on the Royal Green Building. It's called Pickleweed. And this is really just showing all the amazing arts in the different buildings that we have in the community. Next slide. And as I mentioned, racial equity mural. So really wanting to focus on the priority of the city council and the equity art projects here in the community. And this is one, hopefully of many more to come. And we launched our steering committee early this year. And what we did is we wanted to make sure that with these weekly Monday meetings that we have with the steering committee that is compiled by six community members and myself and Commissioner Ashford on the committee, it's to ensure that we have the right community outreach and engagement to really reflect all the voices, all the perspectives of this racial equity mural that will be on Jefferson underpass. So you'll see that green highlighted part in the image. That's where it's going to be. So we've hosted two community meetings to date. We have now honed into our top artists, and they will be providing three renderings for the mural. So it's super exciting. That will also have a community meeting coming up. And the plan is to present to you all by the end of the year and have the artists work on it by early next year. So we're really, really excited. It's been an amazing process, and truly just wanted to make sure that this is just the beginning to spark future conversations. And I really appreciated Vice Mayor Hale on your comment about sea level rising, think very similarly to this. Art brings people together and really shares the important information for the community and sparking those conversations. So hopefully, we'll we'll bring that back to the commission and talk about what we can do on that end as well. Next slide. And, you know, another big, I know, priority for the council is youth. And so how do we make sure we bring youth and teens together? And this is, you know, amazing opportunity. This actually shows hotel alleyway student project you'll see on your right side. And also, you'll see on the left side about arts in action. So just a really amazing partnership and collaboration with youth and arts, and really having them express what whatever type of project or topic they're talking about in a visual way. So we really want to make sure that we can do this through improving our grant process and outreach, and make sure that we involve as many of our youth in the community as possible. Next slide. And under construction. So as I mentioned, another way that we want to improve our outreach is to improve the commission webpage. So we're working very closely with the city to make it as easy as possible for folks to really know who we are, what we do, and how they can get involved in the future. Next slide. And this is actually a really awesome thing. I'm hoping everyone knows about our Explore Redwood City Tour app. So it really shows you where our artwork is in the city. But if you don't know, or if you're like, I would love to tell my family and friends, totally makes sense. When I didn't start the commission, I wasn't aware of this app and the opportunity to see all the amazing artwork in the city. So that's definitely something that we want to take upon ourselves this upcoming year to make sure that we really tell that story and that narrative, all the great artwork. I was telling Chris that I bring my family and friends, and I do an art walk throughout Redwood City, and it's just an amazing way to get to know your community and really building that community through art and through these murals that we have in the city. So we really want to make sure that we do that. And the other one is also building a database for artists. We want to make sure that as a commission, we're building those connections, getting, you know, talking back to equity, getting those emerging artists, the ability to talk to our other artists. And if we as a commission are able to do that through our different contacts and through our different projects, we want to make sure that we really embrace that and make it even bigger and better for the years to come. And now back to Anna.
And as a part of our improving communications and outreach, we really want to be developing community building through our artwork initiatives, as seen in some of these next slides. So this is Casa Circulus programs in our parks, and that supporting youth arts. Next slide. This is the mosaic art at Magical Bridge. Next slide. Chalk artwork in downtown. Next slide. In the art kiosk, so that everyone can really come together to experience the art. Next slide. So with that, we would really love for people to continue to come and get involved. We meet on the first Thursday of the month via Zoom, just like this, at 7:00 PM. Additionally, we are sad to see that one of our commissioners is leaving us, but that means we will have an opening on the commission. So if anything here has piqued your interest about being a part of the commission, about being actively involved, about getting to familiarize yourself with the arts in Redwood City more, please do reach out. Please do join us some Thursday. And with that, we welcome your questions.
Well, that was a wonderful, wonderful presentation, Ashley, Anna, and to all your commissioners. Thank you very much. That that was very thoughtful and a lot of hard work went into that. Terrific.
Mayor Howard, sorry to interrupt. I just want to give a huge shout out to Joanna, who she put all this together for us, and we gave her the idea. So thank you. The city app is amazing. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Joanna. Thank you. I was going to say I'd like to do a shout out also to Suzie Peyton. I believe she was the one who really was very instrumental in getting that map, that public art map put together. And so and she worked so hard on it. And I'm very, very impressed with it. So I hope many people will download that free app and and take that walk, as you suggested, Ashley. With council members, have any questions of the Arts Commission at this time? Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And wow, one of the things that is extra special about Redwood City are our utility boxes. And now I can't wait to drive down Commercial Way. I'm so excited to see those murals. Thank you so much for making those part of your presentation. But our artists, our resident artists are so talented and are so engaging and are so generous with what they do for our community. That this is such a wonderful way to highlight them and really let the world know what treasures they are. And I I'm so grateful to you for this presentation and for all that you do. I see a fundraiser tabletop book in your future, because that's what I want. I want a Redwood City Arts tabletop book. And and I'll pay for that. So thank you so much. This was brilliant. I really loved it.
That's a great idea. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Hi there. I would just like to make comments if no one else had any questions. I'm happy to wait.
No, why don't you go? Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you for everyone for this presentation. You know, one of the best things about Redwood City is our public art. You know, it's always been something that's been part of my life, noticing the art in Redwood City, growing up here. I got to participate in a lot of the programs Redwood City provided to the community for free. And I'm just so excited to see the path that we're on, you know, opening up displays and alleyways of different mediums of art, just the creativity that's come about. And I know we've already spoken before, you know, about ideas in the future. So I just want to share that I'm really excited. And I look forward to the the more, you know, you open this up to the community, because I would love to see just everyone have the same access to wonderful experience of art, because it's far more. This is part of the city stuff where it's not just about being, you know, someone who goes to work every day. This is stuff that like enriches a person, enriches our culture. And so I really appreciate this kind of the work you're doing here to really allow the public to be part of the art that is in our community. And I'm, you know, very in favor of anything that comes about to, you know, make the the obstacles or the, you know, the limits disappear, you know? I just really want kids to grow up thinking they could do whatever they want, really have their hands, you know, at like putting a mural on the wall of a building somewhere. That's just really wonderful stuff. So I really appreciate all your work and keep doing it.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Chair Quintana, Vice Chair Westendorf, Chris, thank you for the presentation. Some fabulous stuff. Congratulations. And ongoing during the pandemic, that's even more. Wow. Chair Quintana, you mentioned you were going to talk a little bit more about the efforts to commission about diversity and inclusion. Can you spend a couple of minutes more, or maybe three seconds, whatever it takes, just to talk about the commission's outreach and efforts to be more inclusive across all parts of our community?
Yeah, absolutely. So racial equity.
Chair Quintana, I think I think you've been frozen. I hope you can hear us. It might be possible to call in.
While.
Or Vice Chair could possibly step in?
While Ashley hopefully reconciles some of her tech issues right now to answer the question. So in additional to the racial equity mural, which is obviously a priority for us right now, we're really thinking about how diversity touches all of our work, including making it a key priority and factor in how we consider grant applications. I think the important thing about diversity and inclusion in the arts becomes about making sure that's touching all aspects. So yes, we're going to do the racial equity mural, and that is an important project that we want to see through. But additionally, there are a lot of ways diversity and inclusion makes its way into the arts in general and how But additionally, there are a lot of ways diversity and inclusion makes its way into the arts in general and how we present them.
There again, I know that's hard work, but thank you for doing the hard work and keep going. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for picking that up. We appreciate that. I see we have more comments. Council member Aguirre.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo everything that's been said. I actually did the walk of the murals and they are amazing. It's such a, it's, it's such a sense of pride to have this in our city. So I want to thank the commission, Chris, under your leadership and both the chair and vice chair, the commission for what you're doing. And I look forward to seeing more and many of us that have traveled to other cities come back with things that we see. And now I hope people feel the same way when they visit our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to echo the comments of my colleagues, really fantastic work that the Arts Commission is doing on behalf of the city. Particularly invested in the diversity and inclusion mural that you're doing your work on. I remember the conversations around this mural about two years ago at this point, or about a year and a half ago. I may be mistaken, but you know, these conversations came down at a time when our nation was really suffering around issues of race, diversity, inclusion, and our council very presciently moved quickly and this was a part of it. And I'm really happy to see that it's moving forward and we just, you know, encouraging us to keep up the good work specifically on this mural. I'm really excited to see what it looks like and ultimately, you know, celebrating with the entire community once it goes up. I do have one question for the chair and vice chair, when you obviously are doing incredible work. But is there anything that you would like to be doing that maybe you're not doing yet or haven't, you know, included in your work plan? Anything that, you know, members of your commission have talked about that is like on a wish list, basically? Would love to hear about that.
So I'm not sure if Ashley's returned to the call yet. I, I'm trying to take that on. That's a very big wishlist question. And I think I would actually love to take that back to the commission about, you know, what if, what if, what are our big dreams for it? Because I do think that there are probably things where we are focused on each step of the road of making sure the racial equity mural happens, make sure any of the grants go out on time. And I think that there probably are things that we've thought about from a more holistic, big picture perspective we'd like to do. I've only been on the commission a little under a year, so I might be the wrong person to ask about that, however.
I'm, I'm back. Thank you, Vice Chair Westendorf. Of course, the tech has to drop off when I have to talk. So it's been a year, actually August 2020, which is crazy. You know, just want to say thank you all for supporting this project. If it wasn't for your funding, this wouldn't have been possible. And I would say, you know, going back to a wishlist, more funding would make us do awesome stuff and murals and, and going back to equity and, and getting those artists that might not be able to do it because they need to get paid. And that's one of the things that also, you know, they want to do it for their community and a lot of them come, you know, or grow up in the city, but they really do need that financial substance as well. So that is one of them. And then another one is also, we've done a lot of amazing murals and utility boxes, but we've always thought about sculptures and it goes actually back to money because sculptures do cost more money. And so that's been actually something that we've talked about in the past as potential art projects. So I think we want to get a diverse, you know, art canvases and opportunities, but great question. I think we would, I think it'll be a great question to ask our commission as well.
Thank you so much for that, Chair Cantona. I appreciate it. It's interesting. I remember having the conversation. We ultimately discussed this work plan around the Equity Mural. And I remember giving very specific comments actually about the budget. I'm wondering if actually someone could give an update on that. I, I know that there was a proposal for, I, I don't remember the, the number off the top of my head, but I had, you know, recommended an increase. You know, I think I even recommended doubling the budget, but I'm just wondering where we stand with that. Maybe someone from staff could give a report or an update on that.
Sure. Council member Smith, thank you. It is a hundred thousand dollar budget. We are taking out of our public art fund. So that's through our capital improvement projects based out of the utility users tax. So that has been funded for this year's budget and CIP.
Okay. Thanks so much. I would, you know, just end by saying again, would love to just see if, you know, there are additional pockets of money of, that we could contribute to this project. I realize, you know, the process I started already, but I think that an increased commitment financially to this art project would really be well received by our community. So thanks again, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. I promised this isn't a setup, but I also raised my hand to speak about in favor of sculptures. I think I brought this up during the Equity Mural discussion. I think about it as having a diverse portfolio of, of art. And, you know, I love the murals. I, I got to watch, we went down with our family and watched Jet Martinez paint. I think we annoyed him slightly as well. It's very, it's very intense work that they're doing. It, it's just so remarkable to watch a work of art like that come to life, but in the back of your head is always, well, what happens if this building changes hands? Or what happens if a construction gets, a project gets proposed and you lose that? And so the idea of having something three dimensional that's portable that could move, it is very attractive in terms of the, the lasting impression that piece could make. So I, I do hope at some point we can find the right project and then, you know, build a budget and build a funding for it. And I know these sort of projects get done with a, with a blend or a layer cake of funding, but I think you should push for that. And I'm pretty sure that the, the arts plan called, called for a mix. So whenever you're ready, I think we should, we should start to talk about that. And then I also wanted to just say thank you for how interactive you've made art this year from the mosaic to the work with Casa Circulo. It's been very difficult for children to get access to the types of activities they used to have, you know, indoors at the libraries, doing crafts. And making those available in the parks is just, just the right marriage of our parks and our arts, right there, Chris. So, so thank you and keep doing it because, you know, they aren't vaccinated yet and they, they need that, that curiosity and the stimulation that, that it provides. So, and I, I especially loved the partnership with Casa Circulo, you know, that's just the way we do things in Redwood City. And I appreciated how you, how you brought them in, especially during COVID in such a difficult time for a nonprofit. So thank you for all of your work. It by far exceeds expectations and I just got chills seeing that racial equity, the, the, the amount of space that that will cover and imagining walking or biking or driving under that underpass. And that it'll hopefully be there for, for, you know, a generation or two or more is really exciting. So thank you for the work you're doing. I think it's going to help shape the, the community for years to come.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. I, I have to agree with every single comment that's been made by our council. I, you can feel the enthusiasm around the work you're doing. You, you just feel it. I have taken the art walk and I wanted to let you know that I saw the most wonderful thing last week. I was watching as a couple of people who are visiting from out of town went from one mural to the other and they were taking pictures. And then they were posing in front of the mural and having their picture taken with the mural. Then they'd move on to something else and have their picture taken. And I said, this is just fabulous. People are going to go home and tell their communities what we've been doing. So this is just terrific news. I also wanted to say I love your mission statement. I know you revised it and I really like it. It's very thoughtful and thought provoking and it really touched me. I, I think you did a good job on that. And thank you for doing the Grant Evening. Housing and Human Concerns does that with the Community Block Grant Funds. And it just is so helpful to help people through a difficult process of filling out applications. You don't want that to be a deterrent for people who really want to be involved. So thank you for doing that. I think it's brilliant that you did that. And I hope you'll do it again. Each time you have this kind of funding become available that you do invite people in the door and say, we'll help you fill out that application. Cause you don't want that to be the obstacle for them to do that. So thank you. And I was going to say, we do have a number of sculptures in Redwood City, most notably is at the port. That beautiful, beautiful sculpture down by the water at the port is magnificent. So I am going to say with that, it's a great entry into our next group who is going to be joining us, who is the Port Commission. But I wanted to thank the Arts Commissioners who are here this evening. Thank you to the chair and the vice chair for doing a brilliant presentation. Really did a wonderful job. Thank you so much again and good luck this coming year.
Thank you very much, council members.
Oh, I think we have to, we do actually have public comment. We need to open it up for public comment to allow the public, if they would like to speak to the work of the Arts Commission. So at this time I'll turn it over to our city clerk for that.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on item 7A, which is the Arts Commission Work Plan for fiscal years 2021 to 22 and 22 to 23. If you have any comment at this time, we ask you to please raise your hand, keep your hand raised until you are called. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, we do have one speaker. Anybody else? Okay, one speaker for the Arts Commission. Our first and only speaker is Michael Solorio. Michael, you'll have two minutes and the timer will begin when you begin speaking.
Hey y'all. Just like the city council members, I want to express, I want to express my gratitude to the Arts Commission. I'm like a relatively new resident. I moved in last August. So really just like a year I've been here. But like with all the art and when I see it when I'm jogging and when I'm biking by and I like run into like these cool murals, it makes me feel like more at home. Also like prideful to like live in Redwood City. So I'm really grateful that the city, through the Arts Commission, is able to prioritize arts like that. And I'm also grateful that y'all are pretty like in touch with like our, with like our wishes and equity and in inclusion. So I'm really excited to see more like art that's like themed in racial equity and inclusion so that I could like see people like myself represented in these art pieces. And I'm also really grateful that y'all found cool projects like the World Cafe. That was really fun when we had it ritual this year. And yeah, thanks, thanks so much for what you do. I, it'd be cool to see some queer art in the future, some suggestions. I know y'all don't do the art, but trying to speak this into existence and be sick to see queer art. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Michael, for your comments. And that is the close of public comment for this item. And I'll turn it back to Mayor Howard. Mayor Howard, I think you were on mute earlier.
Yes, I was. Thank you very much. So I see that we are going to be asked to approve the proposed Arts Commission Work Plan for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 and fiscal year 2022 through 2023. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second, please.
Still moved.
Okay, motion by council member ready, seconded by Vice Mayor Hale. And we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Start with council member Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Council member G.
Yes.
Council member ready.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to 7B, the Board of Port Commissioners Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Report. Port Commissioner Loriana Castrop will give the presentation and Executive Director Christine Zortman will present and give remarks and answer questions. Ms. Castrop, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Howard and Vice Mayor Hale and city council members.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having the port here this evening. I am Commissioner Loriana Castrop, the chair for the prior fiscal year 2021. Current chairman Dick Clare is unable to attend this evening. However, he sends you his regards. Next. The Board of Port Commissioners is appointed by the city council, as you know, to oversee and guide the port and its operations pursuant to section 47G of the city charter. The current board shown on this slide reflects deep business and financial expertise and have a wide variety of public service experience, serving the broader Redwood City community. I am honored to have served with my fellow board members as a port commissioner since 2008. Next. The port is aligned with several of the city's strategic plan guiding principles. I won't read all this to you. We will go into all of these items in more detail on the following slides. But I would like to emphasize that most of our work as a board revolves around our fiduciary management of the port's infrastructure and financial assets. Basically, we want, we run the port as a profitable business. Last year, our revenue was $9 million based on 1.8 million metric tons of cargo crossing our wharves. Next. Three port values drive our operations and vision into the future, including maritime trade, serving Silicon Valley and waterfront recreation. Building upon these values, the port focuses our efforts in many areas, including capital investment, stewardship, transparency, community benefit, and of course, our ongoing collaboration with the city, all of which I will speak to in the next few slides. Additionally, in January of 2020, the board approved the 2020 strategic vision for the port, which emphasizes growth and opportunities in each of these core value areas over the next 20 years. Next. The port, as an enterprise department of the city, strives to partner and collaborate with the city in a variety of ways. First and foremost, unlike other ports in the United States, I'm very proud that the port of Redwood City supports the city's general fund through the annual subvention payment. Over the past few years, the subvention payment has been over a half a million dollars per year. Additionally, we have a strong relationship with many city departments, including IT, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and our fire and police departments. The port historically partners with these various departments in training exercises, contract services, and most recently, community events and waterfront activation in our recreational area. Lastly, one moment, the city, the partnership between the port, the city, and the Water Emergency Transportation Authority, or WEDA, has advanced the long overdue future public ferry terminal at the port. We are pleased to have accomplished several milestones last year, including the feasibility and economic study for the future ferry. Currently, the port is managing the next step in the ferry process, the business plan, which is in partnership with the city and WEDA. Next. The port has a history of stewardship in various areas, including environmental sustainability, fiduciary, and transparency. Recently, the port enrolled in the largest international voluntary environmental program called Green Marine. We joined other large and small ports and maritime industries in the effort to improve our carbon footprint in areas of air quality, water quality, energy consumption, and other sustainability efforts. As I stated previously, our future ferry will provide a more sustainable mode of transportation via the water, reducing freeway congestion, improving air quality, and reducing wear and tear on our roadway systems. This past year, we also focused on reducing our operational overhead with the approval of a new cost recovery policy for on request work performed by port staff on behalf of our tenants. The port is also committed to supporting our local nonprofits. The port is also committed to supporting our local nonprofits through an annual call for sponsorships and funding evaluation process. Beneficial reuse supports our local sea level rise initiatives, as discussed earlier in your meeting, as well as providing valuable bay mud as a resource to create and establish intertidal habitats for resilient shorelines. Above all, we strive for full transparency in our daily operations. Next. The port's primary revenue generator is our maritime trade. This is foreign trade. Many people in Redwood City don't realize how much foreign trade crosses our docks. Our maritime tenants' operations also contribute to our revenue. This revenue provides the port with capital to reinvest into the port's infrastructure, benefiting the region and the community. And we are pleased this year to invest in a new public fishing pier. That will be something that'll be fun for people to go out right over the water. If they don't fish, they can at least stand above the water and enjoy the fact that we are a waterfront community. We are also doing new rail infrastructure and the port's channel needs through sponsorship with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the port's investment into our berth dredging, which we pay for ourselves. It's important for the public to know that although we receive the Army Corps funding through congressional budget appropriations, the money does not come from your tax dollars. It comes from the Harbor Maintenance Trust Fund, which is funded by assessments to import shippers. Lastly, as previously indicated, beneficial reuse of dredged materials, basically the bay mud, has also been a focus from state, and we have supported the California State Coastal Conservancy's efforts toward that endeavor. Next. While the port had a small reduction in our cargo tonnage for fiscal year 21 due to the pandemic, the pandemic allowed us to pivot and think of new activation efforts along our waterfront for the community. We secured a commercial fisherman to our waterfront, offering fresh fish sales on many weekends, including local entertainment. We were also delighted to partner with the city's Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department for new drive-in events, which allowed our residents safe entertainment alternatives such as drive-in movies, the Zope Circus, and the Dragon Theater variety show performances. We continue to find new ways to activate the recreational waterfront, including new redevelopment opportunities, new outdoor gathering and picnic amenities, and continuing our public art along the waterfront. Next. We are pleased to secure grants and awards for the work and the impact that the port provides to the region. I'm very excited to announce our new website branding and communications program was awarded the highest communications award from the American Association of Port Authorities, which represents all ports in North, Central, and South America. For the past three consecutive years, the port has received grant funding from the Department of Homeland Security in the Port Security Grant Program. Next. As you can see, our port has been super busy during the past year and has big plans for the upcoming year. I'd like to recognize Port Executive Director Christine Zortman and our port staff for their hard work during this challenging time. Thank you for this opportunity to share the port's annual report for fiscal year 2021. And I will be happy to take any questions that the council may have. And I will also encourage you to ask your questions of Director Zortman, who is online as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Castrop. Nice to have you here. And thank you to Ms. Zortman. Should we, um, let me see. I was going to say that we could have council discussion now, but I think what we'll do, we'll take public comment on this item and see if anyone would like to speak about the port, or maybe they have some questions about the port. So I'll turn it over to our City Clerk to facilitate public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. For members of the public, now's the time for public comment on item seven B. This is the Port Commission's 2021 Annual Report. If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, keep your hand raised until you're called. Okay, Mayor Howard, there are no hands raised at this time for this item.
Well, thank you. I think the Commissioner's presentation was so thorough that there were no questions to ask, I guess, I'm thinking. So I'd like to open it up for council discussion. We do not approve your budget. We accept your budget on an annual basis. But I'm sure our council members do have some comments or questions for you. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard and Commissioner Castrop. Thank you for the presentation. I'm gonna have to ask this question kind of in an awkward way because I think you mentioned in your presentation, the RFI and their request for proposals for the redevelopment of the Marina waterfront. And with that being out there, I can't quite ask it without compromising the process. But maybe the best way I can ask is, what are your expectations of the RFP process? What do you expect to come out of it?
That's a really good question, Councilmember G. And we're very, very early in the process, and I will also refer you to Director Zortman for more detail. But, but our, our overall expectation was to see, to basically, just use a nautical reference, stick our toe in the water and see what the, what the opportunities might be out there for what we consider a slightly underutilized portion of our port property. If you've been out to Seaport Court, which is where we have the low-rise office building, a big lawn that we use for public events, so part of the Bay Trail goes along there, the Sequoia Yacht Club, the Seaport Conference Center, and there's a large parking lot. It, the way the, the property is laid out is, is maybe not to the highest and best use that it could be. And we feel that we needed to reach out to, you know, some experts to see what their visions might be and to look at the process as being, hey, let's throw some really creative ideas out there and see what resonates with the community. So Director Zortman, do you have more to add? We're so early in the process that I don't really have any firm things for you to chew on, but that's what, that's what I can say right now. Director Zortman?
Sure, thank you. Thank you. So when the board adopted the 2020 vision in January of 2020, one of the components in that looked at creating destination type uses. And as the Commissioner stated, I think that what we realized is we have, we have a gym here within Silicon Valley, and it's underutilized in its current configuration for visitors serving, as well as destination type uses that are along the waterfront. And so, as she mentioned, we're, we're, we're early in the process. We want to see, you know, the interest. This is the Port of Silicon Valley. It seems like we could create some destination type uses that could be attractive to all of the residents in the community. And really, we develop underutilized area, offering community benefits, as well as increasing the revenue to the port, enhancing our public arts, and giving youth the opportunity to understand what's available for them to come and explore at the port as well, because there is waterfront there. So we're early in the process, but we really hope that the outcome is going to be something that really energizes and reactivates the waterfront area for us.
Very good. And the timing of all this, is it like in six months or eight months or next week?
Great question. So the first phase, the RFI, we went through that process, spent about 60 days going through that process, got a lot of good feedback, some of which, you know, we have, we are obligated to comport with BCDC regulations and making sure that we're still within the city's general plan and other things. Now we are currently assessing the next steps and really in the process of establishing what the framework is going to be for the RFP, which will be the next stage that we would like to go into. And I would suspect that the board being able to give staff direction, we should be able to have some type of RFP on the street in the third, fourth quarter of calendar year 2021.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Do any other council members have questions or comments? Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Just wanted to say thanks to the commissioners here. Be honest, I certainly have a lot more to learn about what the port does, but it's really interesting to see how y'all have really taken care of our ports. And I congratulate you for your dedication to joining, you know, the efforts to finding sustainability and environmentally friendly practices through the nonprofit partnership and, and your award. So I really appreciate that. I hope there's much more to come with your partnerships with Parks and Rec. And, you know, I'll have more reasons to, to come visit the area. And it's exciting to see that y'all are open to a lot more expansion and seeing how it can be lively again. So congrats. Good job on adapting through the pandemic as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ready.
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard, and thank you, Commissioner Castrop, and your wonderful Christine Zortman. I couldn't be more proud of our port. For those of you who have been able to take tours of our port, it was such an eye-opening experience to, for me when I first came on council. I knew the port was there and had no idea what, what an amazing operation we have here in Redwood City. As I recall, it's one of the 11th largest ports in the country, something like that. It's, I was blown away by, by the, what an amazing business it is. And people, ships are coming in from all over the world to Redwood City. So I'm just really proud and I'm, and thank you so much for, for your report. I really enjoyed it a lot.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. Well, I was going to say that I think Pioneer Seafoods opened the door. And Christine, I think that was probably one of the nicest phone calls that you received when you, you said, well, why don't we try that? And it probably got you thinking about a whole host of other possibilities. Because when I go down there and he has music playing and people are happy and buying seafood, I mean, they're just such, like you're saying, let's see what other opportunities can come of our wonderful port and possibly underutilized for certain things. So I'm looking forward to this. I think it's fabulous that you're stretching and looking outside the box to see what else you can do. I was going to say that I am so proud of you that you've been designated by the federal government as the only San Francisco Bay federal staging area for the deployment of first responders and emergency resources during catastrophic events. And you do training there and you do a host of so many things. You should be very proud of that. And I just think it's wonderful. And I'm wondering if you could tell us, is that the reason that you're going to be doing a new interagency operations center? So you can have an area to coordinate and collaborate and bring all the resources together, not only in times of every day, but in catastrophic events that you'll have that available to you?
In the interest of time, we didn't go into that particular project in a great deal of detail, but it is, we, we just approved contract documents for building it. So that's part of next year's work plan that our Chair, Commissioner Clare, will discuss next year with you. But frankly, it, it's been a long time coming. We, we will, we needed to get some grant funding from the Department of Homeland Security. And yes, absolutely, your comments are right on target. They, that Interagency Operations Center will allow first responders, city, city departments, the Sheriff's Department, county, you know, county sheriff, as well as FEMA, Nash, on the national level, and, and other communities who are nearby but on the bayfront to collaborate effectively, bringing in personnel as well as material to, to buy water. Because as most people know or could figure out, in the event of a major earthquake and, and other kinds of disasters, our roadways may be compromised or blocked, certainly the overpasses and bridges will need to be inspected for safety. So, so water is a safe way to travel in the event of an emergency and a direct route, more direct than any other. So we, so we are a very likely place to be for FEMA to put its personnel and, and have that collaboration. So the Interagency Center will have all the communications, technology. You know, with the desks and the screens, you've probably seen these on TV, these kinds of centers where people can all gather together and communicate effectively. So Director Zortman, do you have more to say about the IOC?
No, I think you summed it up. And I think, Mayor Howard, one thing that we're very proud of is the three years that we have been successful in securing grant funding from Department of Homeland Security. I think what it really does is it demonstrates the federal's, the Fed's confidence level in our port here in Redwood City. And I think that that's important. And I think the other thing that is really great for us is, is that it continues our collaboration with our first responders, both within the city, regionally, and the state and federal level.
Thank you so very much. I so look forward to that tour when the time comes. I really do. But thank you. That's very good to hear. Thank you so much for coming here this evening. I really, really appreciate your coming and your great work. May it continue. And please tell the other commissioners that we were very much appreciative of the work plan you have for this coming year. I wanted to let the public know that under the city's charter, the City Council receives an annual report from the port but does not approve it. We're invited to ask questions and provide comments. So at this time, I'd like to ask our council if they would like to make a motion in a second to receive the Board of Port Commissioners Fiscal Year 2021 Year End Results and Objectives for the fiscal year 2022 and their annual report. Could I get that motion in a second? I think I heard council make, Councilmember Smith make that motion. Is that, and, and by Councilmember Aguirre. Could I have a roll call, please?
Start with Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you again for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, waive the first reading and introduce zoning ordinance amendments, Articles 31, 33, 36, 37, 45, and 48, to amend the accessory dwelling unit requirements, including applying front yard setbacks. Community Development and Transportation Director Mark Munzer will give a presentation. Legal counsel Alexandra Barnhill, City Attorney Veronica Ramirez, and Senior Planner Apollo Rojas are available for questions. We'll start with Director Mark Munzer.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and members, members of City Council. Also joining us tonight are Principal Planner Diana Otel, as well as our outside legal counsel. We have a whole team working on this. Mayor Howard, after my presentation, feel free to direct questions towards me and I will ask the appropriate member of our team to respond. and I will ask the appropriate member of our team to respond.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next slide, please. So at the last meeting discussing ADUs on April twelfth, twenty twenty one, the City Council approved by motion six zero to set a height limit of twenty to twenty four feet for detached two-story detached ADUs, the higher twenty four feet accounting for roof slope specifically, and also to clarify massing and privacy standards for detached two-story ADUs. Staff is returning tonight to confirm front setback requirements for ADUs and other miscellaneous amendments to the ADU ordinance. In this case, a setback refers to how far a structure is set back from the front property line. Between the April twelfth City Council introduction of the ordinance and the scheduled second reading to adopt the ordinance, staff received comments that cities were not allowed to apply front setbacks to ADUs. The ordinance's second reading was not held and staff verified the front setback information with the state's Housing and Community Development Department, referred to as HCD, who oversees state ADU legislation. Staff, as I mentioned, also retained legal outside legal counsel, who has provided guidance to us throughout this latest series of ADU amendments. After confirming that statewide exemption ADUs, which I will define in a minute, did not need to meet required front setbacks, staff returned to the Planning Commission on June fifteenth, twenty twenty one, to discuss front setbacks and the other miscellaneous ADU amendments. The Planning Commission recommended a minor amendment to the front setback requirement. And the ordinance in front of the City Council tonight reflects that amendment and is both the Planning Commission and the staff recommendation. We understand the ADU ordinance adoption process has been challenging. State law can be difficult for local jurisdictions such as ours to interpret, and individual cities have used different approaches. Keeping that in mind, staff provided a copy of this draft ordinance and HCD provided a preliminary review of the ordinance. And staff has incorporated those HCD comments tonight. All reviews by HCD prior to City Council ordinance adoption are preliminary and do not constitute a final review. HCD will only provide their final review of our ordinance once it is adopted. Staff will send a copy of the ordinance to HCD within sixty days, assuming adoption. Next slide, please. The questions. Thank you. The questions before the City Council tonight include the following. As usual, we will display this list at the end of my presentation. One, does the City Council support the Planning Commission's staff recommendations, which include applied front yard setbacks to ADUs unless it would preclude a statewide exemption ADU? Again, I will define that momentarily. And also to adopt various miscellaneous amendments, including applying historic preservation standards to properties on the California Historic Register, the removing of window privacy standards for opaque clear story windows on the second story of an ADU, and other amendments that were initially approved at the April twelfth meeting. Next slide, please. Front setbacks can be applied to ADUs. Front setbacks are fifteen feet in most residential zoning districts. Statewide exemption ADUs, per HCD, however, must be accommodated in the front setback. Statewide exemption ADUs are detached ADUs up to eight hundred square feet and up to sixteen feet tall or less, or ADUs converted within the primary dwelling or the conversion of an existing detached structure. So I know that's a lot of information, so I will just reiterate that. A statewide exemption ADU is a detached ADU up to eight hundred square feet or sixteen feet tall or less. It is a conversion to an ADU within a primary dwelling unit or within an existing detached structure. HCD feedback again has been that state law requires these exemption ADUs to be allowed in the front yard and that cities could not prioritize the location of this particular type of ADU. All other ADUs, for example, detached ADUs over eight hundred square feet or taller than six feet, sixteen feet tall, would not be permitted to be built in the front setback should this ordinance be approved. Staff strongly believes that the vast majority of ADUs could and should be accommodated in the rear yard and that ADUs in the front yard typically result in poor urban design, reduced pedestrian visibility, and often create potential utility conflicts that can run through oftentimes a front setback. The city would continue to strongly encourage that all ADUs, including state exemption ADUs, be built in the rear yard where the vast majority of lots can accommodate them. Staff will return to the City Council in one year with a progress report on this ordinance and on specific ADU construction data. Staff will also continue to monitor updates from HCD and review ADU ordinances from other local jurisdictions, including those considering requiring front setbacks for statewide exemption ADUs. Next slide, please. There are other miscellaneous amendments included in the ordinance for City Council's review that bring the city into compliance with state law, and they help also to implement the state's ADU requirements. These include amendments that were approved at the April twelfth City Council meeting and a summary of those previously discussed amendments is in attachment C of your staff report packet. Of note, staff is recommending to remove a requirement previously approved by the City Council to require opaque windows on the second floor of a detached ADU. HCD, in their preliminary review of this particular requirement, noted that it was, quote, excessive. So it is recommended to remove the requirement in order for HCD to hopefully approve this ordinance. Staff will also provide an update on this item when we return next year for an ADU update. The Planning Commission is also recommending other minor amendments, including applying Secretary of Interior standards to historic properties on the California Register of Historic Resources within the context of ADUs. Additional miscellaneous amendments include no impact fees for ADUs that are less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, additional text added to the ordinance's purpose section explaining the ministerial review process, allowing an ADU and a J-ADU or a junior ADU within the same primary dwelling unit, and to delete additional square footed standards for large lots over ten thousand square feet. Next slide, please. And here are the questions for your consideration. Staff and legal counsel are here for questions. Thank you.
Before, thank you, Mr. Munzer. Thank you very much. Before we begin public comment, are there any clarifying questions before we enter into public comment? There'll be plenty of time for council discussion and questions after, too. Seeing none, I think that we'll move into the public comment section and I'll turn it over to our city clerk so that she can do public comment on item eight B.
Thank you.
No, excuse me, eight A.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. As mentioned, now's the time for public comment on item eight A. This is introduction of zoning ordinance amendments to amend accessory dwelling unit requirements or ADUs. If you could please raise your hand now if you wish to speak. Keep your hand raised so we can see how many speakers we have. We have one speaker. Anybody else want to speak on ADUs? We have one speaker, Mayor Howard. So our first and only speaker is Chris Johnson. Good evening, Chris. You have two minutes and the timer will begin once you start speaking.
Good evening, City Council, City Staff. I want to thank both City Council and City Staff for taking a step back in April, when it was brought to your attention that the ADU ordinance could and probably would have unintended consequences specifically regarding front yard setbacks. Let's be clear, though. This was only, this only took place after it was brought to your attention by engaged members of the community. There was no sort of epiphany by City Staff on this. I recognize it's difficult to enact poorly written legislation by our state representatives, but historically, we have failed to challenge our state. We have taken the easy way out and we neglected to push back when we can, when we can, especially if it's in the best interest of Redwood City residents. I paraphrase Planning Commissioner Chair Bondano when he said, "HCD is just an advisory body and has gotten it wrong in the past." "This story has been told before," he said. Bottom line, there is nothing in state law that requires the elimination of front yard setbacks, thus paving the way for front yard ADUs. While I was dismayed that staff recommended for the Planning Commission meeting that statewide exempt ADUs be allowed in the front yard, I am grateful our Planning Commission pushed back on this misguided recommendation and subsequently staff has softened their position. Front yard ADUs are poor designed and are not required by the state. The ordinance before you this evening is a true compromise. Please adopt the ordinance as recommended by staff and only allow front yard ADUs when they cannot be built elsewhere on the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And that is our only public comment, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. I'll now close the public hearing and open it up for a council discussion. Who would like to begin with questions or comments? Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Munzer, on our continuing saga with ADUs. Appreciate, appreciate of you, of staff, members of the public who've weighed in over the many months, years, it feels like. And and here we are today. I do have one question. I didn't get to watch the entirety of the Planning Commission meeting, but I know there was reference made to the Millbrae policy. Can you just share how this and there was an interest in that policy? Can you just share how this policy aligns with or relates to that? My understanding was that there was interest in that policy from Planning Commission.
Mr. Munzer.
Certainly, Mayor Howard. I am going to defer to Mr. Rojas, who is at the Planning Commission. I know that Millbrae is one of a number of communities that that we've taken a look at, who has addressed this front setback issue within their ordinance. So, Mr. Rojas.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, Mayor Howard and commission members, or council members. I believe slide number fourteen, we may have a pocket slide, just so we get a visual of the other cities that we're talking about here. So for Millbrae, I think the key component that the Plan Commission focused on was the requirement to have it in the rear half of the lot. So, you know, staff seeing this, we posed that same question to HCD. We said, can we mandate that it first be located in the rear half of the lot? And then from that, HCD responded that we could indeed not, that it was a requirement to remain in the front. And as a slide notes, that Millbrae's ordinance was adopted back in October twenty twenty. So this was prior to HCD providing guidance through their ADU handbook. So, you know, it could be that HCD did not have a firmer stance on the issue until after the handbook was released.
That's really helpful. It feels, just through the commentary, both Mr. Rojas and Mr. Munzer, we're getting more clarity from HCD than we have in previous iterations where they've been sort of silent. Does that sort of characterize what we're seeing now?
I don't know if I'd say clarity. Vice Mayor Hale, I would say it's it's improving. They have issued, as Mr. Rojas mentioned, this handbook, which is helpful. They have been fairly responsive to staff inquiries as of late. And so we can start to get some interpretations before we have these, you know, conversations with the Planning Commission and the City Council. So I have seen improvement, but there's there's some more to go.
Okay. Mayor, if I may just add a comment so that I can save another round of of commentary. I think overall this seems very reasonable, but I do want to hear from my colleagues. It seems like these were sort of the the final items that needed to be ironed out and and here we are. So I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, but again, would love to hear from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes, hello, thanks. I also just wanted to share that, you know, I'm happy to make, to agree upon this compromise. This was very interesting, a conversation with, among us on the council and also the public. And, you know, ADUs, we all know, council for sure, that it's not the end all be all for affordable housing in Redwood City. But I think we made adjustments and agreements to to the accessory dwelling units to make them far more inhabitable in that, I mean, feel much more humane. I, it's not so extreme to say that, you know, there'll be cages. But, you know, I think it does give, you know, the changes that we made so far with the windows, for example, I think it gives people the feeling of normalcy, feeling at home and less cooped up. And I basically, I'm happy that we can move forward on something that will help us build more of a middle ground, a buffer zone for affordable housing at a desperate time. And I hope that we can also continue to be, you know, working to find these compromises as well in 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 building much more affordable housing. And that will be looking like different zoning, you know, ending exclusionary zoning is, I think, the path that we're on and would be best for Redwood City. And larger concepts as well as, you know, things I've mentioned before, things that would help with the speculation of of housing because it's seen as a commodity. There are many things that we can do from rent caps to, you know, out of state transaction taxes and flipping taxes. And I just hope that we continue to have these very open and frank conversations and can meet compromises and, you know, and really be honest and fleshed out the way we were when we discussed those at first or last time. So I as well, I'm happy, and those are my comments about the staff recommendations. Thank you so much for all the work, extended work, extensive work on ADUs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would like to just echo the comments of previous two colleagues. We are getting to the end of a very long and somewhat fraught process. And so it's good to find ourselves in a place where I think that we have reached some level of common ground. You know, I'll just, you know, speak somewhat frankly insofar as I I think that most people in the council can, would agree with saying that front yard ADUs is, you know, not kind of a best practice. It's not something that we want to actively see for the various reasons that were pointed out in the staff report. And I think that, you know, you know, those of us who are perhaps more on the progressive end of the housing conversation would, you know, we would not suggest that, you know, putting ADUs in front yards is appropriate. But we are still interested in getting affordable housing options to folks in our community who need them. And so the fact that we haven't had any applications for front yard ADUs, you know, is telling. And I think that, you know, this is kind of a meeting of supply and demand to some extent. You know, we're moving forward with this policy that does encourage this type of development and it doesn't seem like the city residents want them. So I think that this is a good path forward. And, you know, the last thing I'll say is that, you know, the state is constantly making changes to its ADU policy and HCD is extremely important in the framing of that policy and the reading of it and the enforcement of it. And so, you know, I suspect that moving forward, we will have other conversations around ADUs and that, you know, we should be prepared to make adjustments based upon how the state has moved. And, you know, I think it's, you know, unfortunate that we're going to have to continue to revisit these conversations over and over again. But, you know, we are in a time of crisis and, you know, any support that we can do to aid in that crisis, I think, is value additive. So with that said, thank you all so much for your work and I look forward to voting on this item.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you, Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with my colleagues. And I want to thank the community for their patience as we navigate through all these state mandates, guidelines, and staff and Planning Commission for getting us here, the work that's been done. And I I agree that this is not something that Redwood City would probably benefit from, given the given the kind of housing that we have. And so I agree with the recommendations from the staff and the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and, and thank you to everyone for your patience, perseverance, persistence, and just sticking with this for such a long time. I think we're, we're close to the end of this chapter of ADUs in Redwood City. But, Mr. Munzer, I wanted to follow up on something that council member Smith mentioned in his comments, that this is probably going to be changing, evolving. What is the change management process? If HCD says no, or this is the way we're going to interpret this now, how does that work moving forward? Do we just kind of carry a bucket of these and do them once every two years? Or has there been any thought from or guidance from HCD on the change management process?
Thank you, council member G. There has not been a specific direction from HCD as to, you know, the frequency of how often we can expect these type of changes to be brought to us by the state. From a staff standpoint, you know, we are, as I said in my presentation, is in the report, we're planning on coming back to you next year. I would guess that this will be something that is at least an annual exercise, where we are reviewing our ordinance against any state legislation that may be adopted and doing some sort of consistency check, first with HCD, and of course, coming back to you, and of course, informing the community if it's substantive as to any changes with the ADUs. You know, this will be also kind of part and parcel with the housing element conversations. And, you know, what role do ADUs play moving forward in terms of affordable housing production and housing production? So I would, I would guess this would be something that will be at least an annual basis, could be more. And that's what we're anticipating from an internal standpoint.
Thank you. I can hopefully that it lasts longer, more than a year, that you can spend staff resources doing something else than updating the ADU ordinance. But thank you and everyone for all the hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council member G. Council member Ready.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, staff. This has been, hopefully, we won't be talking about ADUs for a little while. Thank you for all your work, and thank you to our commission members for their work on this. I know that this has been a struggle for them as well. And, and I really appreciate the thoughtful conversation that led us to this compromise. I agree with my colleagues and agree with their sentiments of appreciation and of approval of this, of this compromise, and look forward to voting yes for, for the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Ready. I was going to say thank you so much for the information on the front yard setbacks of our neighboring communities. I can see they're struggling just as we are, and they're probably going to be making changes just as we are. So I, but I always appreciate knowing what others are doing around the same controversial items. So thank you, Mr. Munzer, and your staff for putting that together. I wanted to thank you for the, the report. I felt it was very thorough. It was clear to me that you really put an awful lot of time and effort and really listened to the planning commission and really put a very thoughtful report back to us that made it clear that we could support this. The common sense approach, I mean, I'm all into common sense. And I think the fact that we're going to be in compliance with the state, as well as protecting our neighborhoods, I think this is a very good compromise that we can live with. And so I wanted to thank you. I know it has not been easy for our staff. You've taken a lot of hits. And some of it unfairly, I'm afraid, because when the state doesn't give you clear answers or they keep changing their mind on things, it's really hard to keep dancing with them and figure out what they're thinking. So the planning commission and the staff working together, I think you worked out very reasonable solutions, and I commend you for that. And I hope we can do that more frequently on some of these other challenging issues that are going to be coming before us. So thank you very much again.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And if I may briefly, this is definitely a great example of value add of working with the planning commission and that dialogue that occurs with staff prior to getting to city council. So thank you and the other council members for pointing that out.
Well, I do appreciate all the work that's gone into this. So now we can get on to other things, I hope. So we have a council action before us. Do I hear a motion and a second to waive the first reading and introduce the zoning ordinance amended regulations for ADUs?
So moved, Espinoza Garnica.
Seconded by Hale.
Okay, motion by council member Espinoza Garnica, seconded by Vice Mayor Hale. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Thank you. We'll start with council member Ready.
Yes.
Council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Aguirre.
Yes.
Council member Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Council member G.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item 8B, adopt the City of Redwood City Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. Our Assistant City Manager and Administrative Services Director, Michelle Poche Flaherty, will give the presentation. Ms. Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Hale, members of the city council. I'm Assistant City Manager, Michelle Poche Flaherty, with a brief presentation on the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. Our recommendation for you this evening is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. City council will recall holding a study session on the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, on April 12th of this year. We routinely hold such a study session in the spring to gain feedback from the city council before staff finalizes its annual preparation of two CIP documents. The first document is the Five-Year CIP, which is a planning document that considers the many infrastructure projects the city would pursue if adequate funding could be identified. The second document is the One-Year CIP, which is a budget document that commits funds to a particular set of projects in a fiscal year. For this fiscal year, the One-Year CIP was approved by city council in June, together with the operating budget for fiscal year 2122. In routine years, you would have considered adoption of the Five-Year CIP planning document at that time as well. However, due to delays associated with the pandemic, our production of the Five-Year CIP was postponed by about six weeks, and that's why it's before you tonight. The CIP includes infrastructure projects for water, sewer, stormwater improvements, transportation, parks, buildings, levees, public art, as you heard about tonight, and technology. And with the anticipated adoption of an equity plan by the city council later this year, staff will be better equipped to apply an equity lens to the capital improvement program in the future. The CIP uses a variety of revenue sources to fund and support capital projects. While the estimated five-year revenues by fund are 162.4 million, the anticipated five-year funding allocations needed are 214.7 million. So there is still a funding gap of about $52 million, and that is pretty typical for these types of multi-year planning documents. Staff in multiple different departments continually monitor state and federal funding programs for new grants and any other potential sources of additional funding to continually try to close portions of that gap. In terms of identified revenue, 41% of the funding for capital projects comes from the Capital Outlay Fund, which is funded from the Utility Users Tax Revenue, or UUT for short. UUT is a tax on wired and wireless communications, and in Redwood City, we use it solely for capital improvement projects. The next largest funding source is water capital projects at 25%, followed by sewer capital projects at 19%. And there are no major changes this year in the Five-Year CIP. Therefore, that completes our CIP presentation for the evening, and I would be happy to answer any questions from the council at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Flaherty. If there are any clarifying questions, we can ask Ms. Flaherty. If not, we can open the public hearing and have discussion following the public hearing. Seeing no questions, I'll now open the public hearing and turn it over to our city clerk to facilitate public comment. Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on Agenda Item 8B. This is the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program. If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand now and keep your hand raised, so we can see how many speakers we have. Anyone to speak on the CIP? Mayor Howard, there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. I know this has been before the council before. So I will now close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. The slide is before us with the recommendation, and we'll start with council member Jeff G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, Michelle. You know, these, some of these projects are big, some are small. There's a whole range of projects here. And one of the things that I've heard constantly from our colleagues in Washington that this administration is presenting and creating potentially unprecedented opportunities for transportation, infrastructure, funding. So do we have a hot list if congressmembers fear or congresswomen issue were to say to Redwood City, hey, I would like to provide funding for Redwood City? What's on your top three lists for your CIP?
Yes, we, we do prioritize the CIP, and when federal funding becomes available, we also look at the specific characteristics of any particular grant program to prioritize our requests as well. And so our, our CDT staff in particular have been working on a couple of those with our congressional offices this year.
My experience is that if we're ready and there's money found or money available, it goes to, to the group or the institution or the agency that's ready to use it and put it to work right away. So it's always great to have a five-year plan, but I would like to make sure we have a hot list in case we get that phone call and saying, we've got a check waiting for you. What would you like it to be? And would you like to spend it on? So thank you very much.
I, I would agree with that, council member G. Council member Aguirre.
My question was similar, was how will the new infrastructure funding from the federal level help us? And I think council member G said it specifically, things that are project-ready are probably a priority as we move forward and continue to meet with our congressional representatives. But thank you for that.
Thank you, council member Aguirre. Are there any other council questions? Or would someone like to make a motion on the recommendation?
My approval, G.
A second, second, Aguirre.
Council member G makes the motion, and council member Aguirre, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the roll call vote. Ms. Aguilar.
Start with council member Smith.
Yes.
Council member Aguirre.
Yes.
Council member Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Council member G.
Yes.
Council member Ready.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, 9A. Amendment Number Five to the City's Financing Agreement in Connection with Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act Loans and Silicon Valley Clean Water, Enabling Issuance of Short-Term Low-Interest Debt During Construction While Locking in Long-Term Financing to Minimize Total Interest Costs Associated with Silicon Valley Clean Water Capital Improvements. Our Financial Services Manager, Derek Rampone, will give a presentation, and Silicon Valley Clean Water Executive Director, Teresa Herrera, and consultants Douglas Brown and Robert Poor are also available for questions. We'll start with our Financial Services Manager, Mr. Rampone.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and council members. As you stated earlier, your Financial Services Manager, Derek Rampone, I'll be presenting this item this evening. Next slide, please. So tonight's outline, our presentation will cover the staff's recommendation, give some background information on Silicon Valley Clean Water's CIP program. We'll talk a little bit about the expenditures and financing of the CIP program. We'll discuss the debt that's being proposed for approval tonight, and then we'll finish it up with our recommended action and then take any questions. Thank you. And as Mayor Howard mentioned, we do have manager Teresa Herrera on the line from Silicon Valley Clean Water. We've also got our Public Works Director, Terrence Koff, on the line, and two consultants that are with Silicon Valley Clean Water, Doug Brown and Robert Poor. So they'll be here to answer any technical questions that you may have specifically about any of the CIP projects or the debt financing itself. So before you tonight actually is a resolution authorizing the execution of the Fifth Amendment for debt financing for Silicon Valley Clean Water's Capital Improvement Program. This amendment relates to the issuance of two short-term notes and two WIFIa loans. And for those of you who are not familiar with WIFIa, it stands for Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act, and it's funded by the Environmental Protection Agency. So this may all sound somewhat familiar to most people as we did this, something very similar to this action that we're doing tonight back in 2019. Next slide, please. All right, so a brief, brief background about Silicon Valley Clean Water was formed in 1975. It's to provide wastewater transmission treatment and effluent disposal services for the cities of Redwood City, Belmont, San Carlos, and the West Bay Sanitary District. The treatment plant is located in Redwood Shores and currently serves more than 200,000 people and businesses located predominantly in San Mateo County. Next slide, please. The original facility was built in the 1980s, late 1970s, early 80s at a cost of around $65 million, quite a deal. The plant is, as the plant is at least 40 years old, replacement of infrastructure is needed at this time. The current CIP program started in around 2008, and it's now in the home stretch. I know if, if some of you have been out to the plant, you will see a lot of new buildings and equipment, both on top of the ground and below ground. The total CIP program is about $950 million, so as you can tell, is a very large undertaking. Next slide, please. Some of the terms you'll hear or have heard was rescue, and that's the, basically, the largest capital project that this debt issuance will be funding. It's called rescue. It's regional environmental sewer conveyance upgrade. That replaces infrastructure that's now at the end of its expected useful life and includes a 3.5-mile gravity pipeline, a headworks facility, which is at the front of the plant, and pump station improvements as well. All three elements have been, are using a progressive design-build-delivery method. And we do have contractor agreements in place for all the elements with anticipated completion date of 2023. Next slide, please. There's a few slides on here. We wanted to just show a couple pictures. Obviously, this is not my specialty for the technical part, but we can just kind of flip through some of these slides. You can see some of the work that's been done out there with the receiving shaft and tunneling. If you want to go to the next slide, talks, it shows a recent picture of the front of the plant where the waste comes in from the, from all the member agencies. This is where it first is received at the plant. And then the next picture actually is a recent picture on the left there. We actually had an event where the administrator of the EPA, Michael Regan, who's the, in charge of the entire EPA, was on site to issue the WIFIa loans the other day, last Tuesday. And I know a couple council, three council members, and the mayor were out there also attending as long, as well as Redwood City staff. So, you know, it's a pretty exciting event. We were, they were, gave people tours of the new equipment. And so it was really interesting, but that, there's shows on the left, there's what that event was last week. So, next slide, please. So there's approximately 300. So there's approximately $380 million left of the required funding for the $950 million CIP program. I just want to note that the city's share, you know, as we're a member agency, we are the largest member, but our shares of that debt is about almost 50%, so roughly 49% of that is Redwood City's portion. After all the debt is issued that we're discussing tonight, we're expecting about a shortfall or unfunded amount of about $25 million, and that will be in the next few months, the next year, since that money is not needed right away. They'll come up with a solution on how that will be funded, and it'll be funded various ways. Could be cash contributions from member agencies. There could be, you know, some low debt, small debt issued. But there's, so basically, this is really the final stretch, like I said earlier, of issuing the debt. And after this, there's just a little bit left that maybe need to be issued and shouldn't be in issue, issuing anything like that for the $25 million that's left over. The next slide is just some graphs that will show, you know, where we are at in this process. As you can see, tonight's action item is the top far right in purple there with the WIFIa loans and notes. So bringing it just under $1 billion, the total expenditures. And you can see kind of where we're at. So like I said, the home stretch, and this is one of the last items to be approved. Next slide is, just shows Redwood City's funding, so you can see that we're just over the $450 million. Like I said earlier, almost 50% of is our portion. So just another graph for you to see a chart. Next slide, please. On this slide, it kind of breaks down exactly what we're doing tonight. We are issuing, there's two different debt instruments that you'll see on here. There's two new WIFIa loans, and then there's two new notes down at the bottom. Those are, the notes are a short-term debt instrument that will be issued. They're approximately 0.9% interest rate and 1.4%, so very, very low and very positive, you know, lending rates right now for those. Those are short-term. So basically, we're going to be issuing the two new WIFIa loans when the notes are due, and we'll use the WIFIa proceeds, which are at a slightly higher interest rate, around 2%. Not very high, but just slightly higher than the short-term notes. We'll issue those to pay off the notes, and that will be this longstanding debt, which will be, over time, be paid off the WIFIa loans. And that's exactly what we did two years ago, just kind of want to keep noting that. The way that these were, the notes and the loan are structured, you'll see in the past, the second bullet point down, that those notes that were issued in 2019 actually saved about $2.8 million in interest savings for the city, and we're expecting about $3.4 million in interest savings by doing it this way again in 2021. I do want to remind everybody, back in October of 2020, the bottom bullet point, the last bullet point, we were able to reset the interest rate on the WIFIa loan from 2.4% to about 1.4% back then. It saved quite a bit of money for the city, almost $20 million. And so we do anticipate, or we do have the ability, we're preserving the ability to do the same on these two new WIFIa loans, should that be in the best interest of all the members. So then just the timeline, we're right in the middle, obviously, here getting approval tonight. We will be moving pretty quickly on this with closing and issuing the notes and everything within the next month. So just a timeline there. And then next slide is just, I want to summarize exactly what we kind of talked about. I know there's a lot of information. You know, Silicon Valley has made some significant investments in its infrastructure over the last 10 years. I don't think anybody could deny that, almost $1 billion. We are substantially secure with the funding after tonight's action with what will be needed to finish out the whole CIP, the entire CIP program. The WIFIa loans are a great source of financing and, you know, very favorable for everybody involved. They do provide low-interest cost financing for these large projects, and we are, like I said earlier, preserving the ability to maybe adjust the rate as time goes on, just depending on what's available. And the final bullet point is just that the notes, the way that this debt is structured, reducing some of the financing costs and the interest costs, like I said earlier, really saves everybody some money. So, you know, very good news. And then finally, just going back to the recommendation, it's the recommendation shown on the slide to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the Fifth Amendment to the financing agreement with Silicon Valley Clean Water, and that relates to amendments to the existing WIFIa loan agreements, to additional WIFIa loan agreements, to revenue notes, and approving the related documents and official actions that are required to do such. And with that, that's it for my part. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Ms. Rampone, that was very good. Thank you very, very much. I know we have the executive director from Silicon Valley Clean Water, Teresa Herrera, and consultants Douglas Brown and Robert Poor. Would they like to add anything or just be available for questions?
I can't pass up an opportunity to speak, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and the council members. Again, I really appreciate the support that we've had from the city from day one of preparing our CIP. I know it's been a heavy lift for all of our members, including the city, and I just really appreciate the support that you've shown to providing replacement of our infrastructure, which is obviously essential facilities to serve the community. So, thank you.
And I'd like to thank our own Councilmember Alicia Aguirre. She serves on the board of Silicon Valley Clean Water. She represents Redwood City, and I want to thank you for your service on that board. It was an excellent presentation that day. I was really glad I was able to attend. Now, Councilmember G?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Just one quick clarification, and Derek, thank you for the presentation. And Teresa, I do want to go on a tour one day of the construction site because it is a very different kind of construction. Just for clarification, all member agencies need to approve this, or am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
That's correct, and all the other three member agencies have approved it thus far.
Okay, I was just going to ask, are we the last one? So I guess we are.
Well, the city of San Carlos met tonight, and they just approved it about half hour ago.
All right, so we will be the last ones. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Ready, do you have a clarifying question?
I'm so sorry. Yeah, my little icons disappeared on my screen. Thank you so much for this presentation, and who knew that sewage was going to be such a sexy topic, right? The, that huge, the boring, everything was just really incredible. And thank you to staff, to Mr. Rampone. Because you always had your eye on the ball, millions of dollars have been saved for the city. And so I just need to emphasize that again, how remarkable that is because that enables us to use that money for something else, right? Just my clarifying question is, the $25 million that you mentioned, is that Redwood City's share? Or is our share half of that $25 million, that last piece?
The remaining projects for our CIP would be for Silicon Valley Clean Water, so the city would be about half of that.
Right.
If there are no other clarifying questions, we'll take public comment on this item, and I'll turn it over to our city clerk to facilitate public comment. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on Agenda Item 9A. This is the city's financing agreement in connection with WIFIa and Silicon Valley Clean Water. Please raise your hand now if you'd like to speak on this item, and keep your hand raised so that we can see how many speakers we have. And there are no hands raised at this time, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. So I'll now close the public hearing, open it up for council discussion. Would any council member have any questions or comments? Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor. Because Redwood City's portion is the largest, as Derek mentioned, you know, the chair is always Redwood City, and I've had other amazing colleagues that have chaired this commission. I just want to, you know, the impact of having Administrator Regan there last week. He was touring the country, and to have Redwood City be one of his main stops, as was mentioned by the mayor, was pretty impressive. But, you know, this project started, you know, at least the project that we're talking about, the rescue project that's being funded, you know, we started this project in 2008. So just to let you know how long this kind of work takes, and, you know, this WIFIa-funded project's created 2,300 jobs, you know. So think about the impact that it does, you know, for our economy as we move forward. And I'm just honored to serve on this commission and to work with folks like Teresa and Derek. That's top of the line, so I just wanted to share that.
Well, Councilmember Aguirre, would you like the honor of making the motion?
Yes, I'd be honored to make the motion to approve adoption of the resolution.
And who would like to make the second? Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the roll call vote.
Thank you, and we will start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica?
Yes.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And thank you all for being with us this evening. That was wonderful news and a great report. Thank you. Moving on to Item 9B. The Housing and Human Concerns Committee fiscal year 2021-2022, Funding Recommendations for Redwood City Human Services Financial Assistance, otherwise known as HSFA, and Funding Recommendation for Life Moves Redwood Family House. Our Human Services Manager, Terry Chin, and Parks will give the presentation, and Housing and Human Concerns Committee Chair, Margaret Becker, is also available for comments or questions. Ms. Chin?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and members of the council. I am Terry Chin, the Human Services and Homeless Services Manager for the city. I'm joined this evening, as Mayor Howard indicated, by Margaret Becker, the Chair of the Council Appointed Housing and Human Concerns Committee, or HHCC. We are here this evening to present the HHCC's recommendations for funding for the Human Services Financial Assistance, or HSFA, program for fiscal year 2021-2022, and for the funding of Life Moves Redwood Family House. While this evening's presentation is focused on the HSFA program, it's important to note that the city is also providing nearly $1.2 million in Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and home funding for fiscal year 2021-2022 to local nonprofits, and has another $2 million in one-time funding that you, our council, has allocated for homeless initiatives for fiscal year 2021-2022. At the end of this presentation, Chair Becker and I will be available to answer any questions. Want to give a little background on the Human Services Financial Assistance Program. The program was established by the city council in the mid-1970s in the context of the first human services element under the general plan. The idea of the HSFA program was to support and encourage social programs supporting Redwood City residents in need. And since its inception, nonprofit partners have leveraged HSFA funding with other funding sources each year to provide these vital services to our community. Available funding for HSFA has varied over the years. General Fund budget dollars supported HSFA from fiscal year 1977-78 through fiscal year 2012-2013, when at that time, funding was actually phased out due to budget constraints. In fiscal year 2015-16, council voted to reestablish the HSFA program, setting aside $1 million from that year's budget for the program. Council subsequently approved the HHCC's proposal to allocate $100,000 each year for HSFA funding from this $1 million set aside. The HSFA program currently focuses on responding to basic human needs services. Background, a little bit of background on the Life Moves Redwood Family House project. In 1990, the city asked Life Moves, at that time known as Shelter Network, to take on operations of the Redwood Family House Shelter in Redwood City. In June 2011, the council approved continued support for Life Moves Redwood Family House in the amount of $34,800 per year, which is incorporated into the annual Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department budget. As a way of monitoring the Life Moves Redwood Family House program, Life Moves submits an HSFA application each year with the same reporting and monitoring requirements as the HSFA-funded applicants. The funding process for HSFA has been streamlined to be combined with our annual CDBG home funding process. And as a part of that process, we issue a single Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA. We hold a Funding Technical Assistance Workshop, which we actually do in conjunction with county and other CDBG home entitlement cities, so that agencies applying for funds only need to attend one workshop. Agencies then submit funding applications and provide a presentation to the HHCC on their proposals. HHCC members review and score each proposal, and then they hold funding deliberations, which are conducted at a regular HHCC meeting. Next slide, yeah, thank you. HHCC members utilize a pre-established set of criteria to score the applications and to make final recommendations, including all of the criteria shown on this slide. Next slide. The HHCC's funding recommendations for HSFA funds for fiscal year 2021-2022 are reflected on this slide and also detailed in Attachment A of the staff report. The minimum funding amounts established for the HSFA program is $10,000. You will note that we received 70% more requests for funding than actual HSFA funding available. In addition, the HHCC is recommending approval of the $34,800 in funding set aside for Life Moves Redwood Family House. At this time, Chair Becker and I are available to answer any questions members of the council might have.
Thank you, Director Chin, for the presentation. I appreciate it. Are there any clarifying questions before we go into public comment? Councilmember Aguirre, you have your hand raised?
I'm sorry, I forgot to lower it before.
That's okay. So why don't we move into a public comment? I will turn it over to our city clerk to facilitate the public comment section.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on Agenda Item 9B. This is the HHCC's funding recommendations. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this item, so we can see how many speakers we have. Mayor Howard, we don't have any raised hands for this item.
Thank you. I'll now close the public hearing and open it up for council questions and discussion. Who would like to begin? Councilmember G.
Let's see. I just want to say thank you to everyone involved in the process. This money and the funding is so important out there, particularly at this time and ongoing. You know, it's just great that we're able to do this. I do wish there was always more to give, but I think it's great that our city and our community is able to do this because the services come back to help our residents. I would be happy to make the motion, but I see that other colleagues have raised their hands, so I'm happy to defer. So thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And I too just want to thank Ms. Chin and the HHCC's staff and the HHCC committee members, I'm sorry. The work that you do is extraordinary. And it's a very, it's a, it's a group of people that really takes this work seriously and has the heart of our city in its, in its hands, you know, when it's, when it's making these decisions. And I'm also proud that, that our core agencies work together to, so that they can make the, the decisions of dispersing the funds, a collective exercise. I remember being part of that several years ago, and I was really pleased that we were so efficient about that. And San Mateo County, like Redwood City, people talk to each other, they work together, and I'm just really proud of the work that's being done in Redwood City. And, and I just wanted to do a shout out about how special that particular mechanism is, that these decisions are made in the county that way. It's really, it's a, it's a wonderful tribute to our county, and it's just another example of the way we work in Redwood City as well. Thank you so much for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to quickly echo comments of my colleagues. I think this is always one of the most interesting, I think impactful, parts of the committee PCC work that the city has. And I'm sure that the AJCC members can attest to that as well. I remember sitting through a few of these CDBG interview panels, let's call it, and they're just tremendous. I mean, just thinking and hearing from so many of the wonderful organizations in the area, and just hearing about the updates of their work is great. I did have a quick question, though. I am kind of, you know, curious about the levels of funding that come in, that are requested by the applicants. So I noticed that there are a few applicants that were requesting more than the $10,000. So I'm just kind of curious as to how we kind of communicate out what the expectations are in terms of the level of support we can provide, and if there are any, you know, situations where, you know, we can be providing more support, you know, than the $100,000 that we get allocated on a yearly basis.
Terry, do you want me to answer that question, or do you want to take it?
Why don't you go ahead, Chair Becker?
I would say that the level of funding that's requested has to do with the project that the organization is, is requesting funding for. And honestly, with the amount of money that we have to allocate, we look at those applications, and we're so complimented. We just think all these programs are so needed in our community that it's really hard to say that we're going to award $20,000, or $25,000, or $15,000 to one organization. And then that means that we're going to be cutting off other organizations. So we just try to show as many organizations as possible how much we appreciate what they're doing, and hope that a $10,000 contribution to their program can, can help their efforts.
Well, I appreciate that clarity. I'd love to, you know, maybe in the future, think about, you know, possibly giving more than the 10,000 level, especially for the projects that are kind of requesting, you know, $30,000 to $40,000. I can imagine that, you know, the 10,000 while being impactful, obviously, they're going to need more funds for the projects that have a larger budget. And so I guess I'm kind of wondering what that would look like. And of course, we won't be able to grant as many grants, but, you know, that impact level is something that I'm really interested in kind of exploring. And, you know, maybe that's something we could think about in years in the future. But overall, of course, great work. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
And Chair Becker, I think I can help answer that question. I, I served on the committee for 10 years, and I can tell you that you talk to the agencies, and they'll be the first ones to tell you that how they can leverage so much more money by the mere fact that we give them $10,000 or $15,000. Most cities don't have the program that we have. We are very fortunate that we do, and I'm glad, I'm very proud of our city that we do. But they're able to leverage foundations and other grants and other monies because Redwood City has stepped up and said, we support you, and we're giving you this amount of money. So their money comes from very, very different sources and many sources. But whatever we can give helps them, gives them a leg up in leveraging many more funds to help make their, their work happen. So I, I know they've told us that before, that they're grateful. Sometimes, we weren't able to give more than $5,000 because there were so many needy agencies. So I was, I'm just impressed in how they make a small amount of money turn into a large amount of money because they serve so many people. I did have a question, though, because there are two agencies on here I see that you did not give funding to, and both of them, well, all of them are such worthwhile agencies. And you're, you're addressing basic human needs. So would you be able to tell me, were the two agencies getting additional funding from somewhere else where they didn't need it as much as others? Could you tell me some of the reasoning why they were not funded? The El Centro de la Libertad and Street Life Ministries?
Both very worthy organizations. We do have a process by which we rank all of these projects, which you probably remember, Mayor Howard, and others on city council who've served on HHCC. And in the end, we use as our starting guideline where those organizations rank by the criteria that we, that we give them scores. And we try to stay pretty true to how well they fit that, those rankings. And those two organizations, organizations this year just fell at the bottom in terms of those numbers.
I'm sure it was a very, very difficult decision to make.
It always is. It honestly always is.
And I commend you for the Life Moves Redwood Family House. I think the city should be very proud. They have supported that agency and that shelter for families since 1990. And again, that's something that other cities just don't do. And so I, I think it's great. And the work of the Housing Human Concerns, please give my best to every member, because I know the hours you put in. It is a long process, not one night, not two, over a period of time. It's a long process. So thank you for the work that you do. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, would someone like to make a motion to approve the recommendations for HSFA programming and funding for Life Moves Redwood Family House?
So, Espinoza?
Second, G.
Okay, councilmember Espinoza Garnica made the motion, seconded by councilmember G. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call.
We'll start with councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Chair Becker and Director Chin, for being here this evening. Thank you so much. Moving on to item 9C, an oral update on the city's response to the novel coronavirus or COVID-19. Our city manager, Melissa Stevenson Diaz, will give the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Howard. The next slide, please. So I appreciate the opportunity to give an update on the city's response to COVID-19, and I'll talk briefly about the status of cases and hospitalizations within the county, and efforts underway to reach those who are not yet vaccinated, and to support continued testing. I'll then talk more about city responses, including, in a little different order than shown here, I'll be giving an update on rent assistance and small business aid, and then turning to our changes in summer hours at City Hall, and planning ahead for city council meetings this fall. So next slide, please. So this graph shows countywide cases of COVID-19 dating back to early 2020. And as we see here, COVID cases in the county have increased significantly since, in the last months, since earlier this summer. And we're now seeing levels that are roughly similar to last July 2020. As of last week in the county, the positive case rate is six times higher among unvaccinated residents. And as we've learned nationwide, the severity of symptoms and possibility of severe outcomes is much higher for those who are not vaccinated. It is great to be able to report that San Mateo County has one of the highest vaccination rates within the nation at 93% for those who are 16 years and older, and over 91% for those age 12 and over. While there was an increase in hospitalized patients who have COVID-19 in mid-August, this represents about 10% of all of those who are hospitalized within San Mateo County hospitals. And in contrast, during the big surge that we experienced last winter, 50% of hospitalizations were related to COVID-19. As of August 19th, there are currently 54 COVID-19 patients hospitalized, and we have plenty of capacity in acute care and ICU units, as well as strong availability for ventilators. Recently, our county health officer, Dr. Scott Morrow, has emphasized that the most important thing we can do is to help each other get vaccinated and to wear a mask indoors. The county is striving to make vaccination clinics radically convenient in their terms. And they're really striving to support stronger vaccination rates in certain areas, parts of our community that are not at the countywide level. And so that includes striving to support those who are age 12 to 15, those who are over 85 in age, those who identify as Hispanic, multiracial, Pacific Islander, and Black or African American. The county is doing direct outreach, including to homebound residents, and seconded follow-up for people in these categories. And we want to make sure that all our residents know that safe and effective COVID-19 vaccines are available to anyone age 12 and up. It doesn't matter what your immigration or insurance status is. And you can go to a, I'm sorry, you can find a walk-up clinic or make an appointment at myturn.ca.gov. So even after getting the vaccine, it's important to be tested if you have symptoms or if you've been exposed to someone with COVID-19. And we now have learned that with the Delta variant, even if you're vaccinated, you may be able to spread it to others. And so we invite people to visit these websites to get more information and to find local test sites. So turning now to city responses. As you know, last year, the city council endorsed our financial and community recovery strategy that we've nicknamed the three Rs: to respond to immediately immediate community needs resulting from the pandemic, with particular care for vulnerable residents, to restore community cultural, economic, and social vitality in partnership with community organizations, to reimagine public services in light of evolving community needs and limited financial resources. So two updates on the respond and restore side of things. The city has been awarded a contract with LISC, that's the Local Initiative Support Corporation, to provide both outreach services and application assistance for the California COVID-19 Rent Relief Program at the Fair Oaks Community Center. And this will help further strengthen our capacity to help tenants and landlords apply for and benefit from this state program. As of July 12th, Redwood City residents had submitted applications requesting nearly $4.5 million for assistance with rent and utility arrears to the state fund. Of those requests, approximately $1.5 million is in the process of being finalized for payment by the state, and another million, sorry, half a million has already been paid to Redwood City landlords. I'd like to turn now to highlight that we also have an important new source of small business assistance. The San Mateo County Board of Supervisors has recently approved a new round of grants to help small businesses that had not received assistance from any of the county, state, or federal COVID-19 relief programs in the last year. This program will provide grants of up to $10,000 for each qualifying establishment to offset losses in revenue and past debt due to the COVID-19 pandemic state shutdown orders beginning last March, to ensure continued operation and help in covering current business operating expenses. The program will distribute 200 grants of $10,000 each to small businesses that meet the needed criteria. And businesses can go to smcstrong.com to apply for funding and receive more information. Next slide, please. While we continue to respond to community needs and focus on restoring community vitality, we are increasingly focused on reimagining city services. We've taken a phased approach to reimagine our in-person services, and some services are now available in person as well as remotely. In July, we started summer hours at City Hall with several services offered in person on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. We anticipate increasing in-person services in mid-October, assuming that local health conditions support this expansion. We are supporting public health and employee health by observing county requirements for everyone to wear masks indoors. Additionally, we have made improvements to our, sorry, I'm just trying to get more on my slide here, sorry. We've made improvements to our filtration systems, and we're making sure that we're observing safe distancing within city facilities. So I would like now to turn to our planning for our council meetings in the months ahead. So remote city council meetings like this one have been possible due to the governor's executive order, which temporarily waives public meeting provisions in the Brown Act. These waivers are expected to be lifted on September 30th, 2021. And assuming this occurs, city council meetings will be held in person beginning October 2021. We know many residents have enjoyed the convenience of participating in city council meetings through Zoom. And as we continue to reimagine city services, we want to support remote participation as well as safe in-person participation in city council meetings. We're discussing how to best support public health during those meetings, including provisions that would support distancing and continuing to observe the county's mask requirement. We also expect that city boards, commissions, and committees will begin in-person meetings in October. We know it's been a tough year, and a tough year and a half for a lot of us. And as we try to support physical and mental health, we want to make sure that residents know that we have free outdoor classes currently available that focus on health and wellness. These are available through mid-September. And we encourage you to look at redwoodcity.org/wellness for the schedule and activities and more information. And finally, as many people are enjoying, we have resumed outdoor events. Throughout the pandemic, we have been following health guidance in all of our city activities. And we've made adjustments indoors based on the current increase in cases related to the Delta variant. As we all are learning, we are understanding that COVID-19 transmission is most likely indoors rather than outside. We're following state guidance for outdoor events, such as music on the square. These events are considered minor events because they draw from a local area rather than attracting people from outside the region. We're continuing to closely monitor health guidelines related to outdoor events and are making adjustments whenever needed. We're also encouraging, although not requiring, we are encouraging folks to wear a mask even when you're outdoors, just to help those who are not yet able to be vaccinated to be safe. just to help those who are not yet able to be vaccinated to be safe. So with that, there's no formal action required this evening, but I'd be happy to answer questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. That was a great deal of information. Really appreciate that. Are there any clarifying from questions from council before we take public comment? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to our city clerk for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now's the time for public comment on agenda item nine C. And that's the city manager's update on the COVID-19 pandemic and the city's response. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and keep your hand raised so that we could see how many speakers we have. Mayor Howard, we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing and open it up for council questions or discussion. Are there any questions or comments for our city manager? Seeing none, I, I'd like to thank you very much, Ms. Diaz, for all that information. And this is all on our website. If they just, if they're not sure where to find it, can they just put it in the search bar and information will come up on how to get some of these addresses or hashtag the links and things like that?
I think it's very prominent on our site and if you have any trouble, please just reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I keep hoping and praying our numbers go down. I just hope that happens. There's no council action required on this item. So we'll move on to item 10A, which is Designating Voting Delegate and Alternate to the League of California Cities. Their annual conference is September 22nd through the 24th of 2021. And we need to select a voting delegate and an alternate. At this time, councilmembers Aguirre and G are registered to attend the conference. So we need a council action and a motion and a second to just designate either councilmember Aguirre or G to be a delegate and the other would be the alternate for the League of California Cities.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to designate councilmember G as the delegate and I can be the alternate.
And that's, that's a good motion. Would someone like to make a second?
Second by Hale.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hale. Can we have a roll call on that, please? And, and just to clarify, it's to have councilmember G be the League of California Cities delegate and councilmember Aguirre will be the alternate for the League of California Cities.
And I hope councilmember G is okay with that.
He was very quiet.
Thank you, councilmember Aguirre, and happy to be there with you at the conference. Thank you.
And we'll start with councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. 10B, any city council member have a report of a conference they've attended? Seeing none, city council committee reports, the Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee. Councilmember Ready, would you give the update?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. It's my pleasure to give the update for the Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee. I want to start by thanking and congratulating our staff, particularly our Brianna Evans, our Equity and Inclusion Officer, for being able to herd cats with our subcommittee. My council colleagues, councilmember Espinoza Garnica and councilmember Smith and I are very passionate about this issue of equity and social justice. And we, we all come to it from a, you know, slightly different place. So I congratulate our Ms. Evans for being able to create a recommendation for us to bring to you, to our council colleagues that are very succinct and well thought out. Because the one thing that we all agree about is that we want this work to mean something. And we want it to influence decisions that are made in the future by, by city staff and future councils. So, so the recommendation is, is just looking at certain elements that we will be examining with more clarity later. But there are six items that, that it's a six-part equity plan. The first is city equity definition, city equity statement, departmental equity commitments, equity lens guidance, geographic equity index and equity policy review. And the last three, those last three, equity lens guidance, geographic equity index and equity policy review are three items that we will be bringing back to you for, after those are, we're thinking those a little bit more thoroughly and so that we can create actual policy language around those to bring to you as a recommendation. But it's been a pleasure to serve on this subcommittee and we look forward to bringing to you something even more policy resembling in the future.
Thank you, councilmember Ready. And now the two by two by two, which is Redwood City, the Redwood City School District and the Sequoia Union High School District meeting was held and Vice Mayor Hale will give the update.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, myself and councilmember Ready are the participants for the two by two by two. We spent the majority of this meeting talking through the district's plans for returning to school, which were fascinating, incredibly detailed and quite frankly heroic. Both districts were either just, Sequoia had just begun and RCSD was just about to begin. And we wish them well and successful school year. Melissa also announced the, Ms. Diaz Stevenson, our city manager, announced the Redwood City together would have survey results soon for the Community Needs Assessment Survey. Then we talked a bit about safe routes to school and better ways that the city and the school districts could collaborate to make sure that our students get to school safely by whatever mode they use to travel. And we have agreed to meet again on November 5th after school's been in session. And I'm certain we'll have more to discuss then. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. And now we have our city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I just had one item that I wanted to share this evening. So as the, the council will recall, the city is partnering with Daily City, San Mateo, South San Francisco and the County of San Mateo on a pilot program that will pair mental health professionals with our police officers who are responding to calls involving mental health crisis. And our hope in working through this shared approach was to set the stage for what could eventually become a countywide protocol. And so that's one of our important goals with this is to be working with other agencies within the county. Initially, the county's Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Department had sought to hire those clinicians directly and found recruitment quite challenging. There's quite a few agencies within the region who are also hiring clinicians at this time. And so in an effort to have the opportunity of clinicians coming sooner rather than later, the county is now engaging directly with Star Vista, local nonprofit in the community for, I think, well over 50 years now, providing mental health services. Star Vista will now be the partner in providing clinicians. They are actively going through recruitment. The city is a partner in those efforts. And we are hopeful that this will yield hiring of clinicians within the next month or so. And that best case, we, we would have a clinician assigned to Redwood City in September or October. We've discussed in the past that this would be a program that does change over time and we are partnering with Stanford, it's a Gardner Center to provide evaluation and help us and the other partner agencies continue to ensure the program evolves and best meets community needs. That's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. That's very good news. Thank you for sharing that. Well, we have finished our city business. I want to thank you all for joining us this evening. I hope you and your families all stay healthy and safe and have a really good week. Good night.